He used to be in the National Guard.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. You live for a little spread for state a long time. So, did you get that soft spot resolved then?
No. He was there inspecting guardrails.
Yes. Don't interfere with my guardrail inspection.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, they were up on.
No, he's probably like, I got all day. What do you want to talk about?
Yeah.
DOT was on the dam yesterday and they were doing guardrail maintenance.
Oh.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
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 Go to bother your office.
Pardon?
Do you need any copies?
Well, I'll do you two because we're going to start the meeting, but I want my copies of this.
Okay.
And color if I could.
Can color? Staple?
Please, that would really be nice.
Okay, can you? Can I go on two sides?
It'd be better if it wasn't.
Okay.
Put a label to leave.
Okay, got it.
You call me.
Let's see. Come on, Tickle.
Sure. All right. Put your phone on, Tickle.
Like, answer, you fool.
I filled my pickup with fuel this morning. I didn't hit a hundred, but I got close.
You want some of put diesel in there?
And I put in diesel, but I wasn't on empty.
I was gonna say, were you only like half a tank?
I told the gal inside, I said, I'm gonna go ask Paul if they do loans.
Right.
If they do loans.
Oh, loans, yeah.
What percent is the interest rate on that?
They can beat, they can beat the bank centers.
Interest just went up today, you know, it's four point five. Do you want that loan again?
Maybe I'll order some chickens with me, huh?
Yeah, there are your papers or something, right?
Yeah.
I like chicken and dumplings.
Though I noticed for the first time that I've been here since I've been here that going east to Mozeckus, this area has the cheapest gas there is.
Morning. Good morning.
Morning, my buddy.
Bring me a light load now.
That's a bad time.
Wow, dude, I think you went to the other county and borrowed some.
I bet you they've already been welcome to let her take it.
We were there to invite it to look at it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Somebody smells something. Or assumes something.
Sorry, wait.
Okay.
You try. If you take that clip there.
It's addressed?
Jam some of the others.
They assumed it was for you.
Ah, I wonder what's going on here.
It's not a bad number.
He flips it over.
Been a while since I've driven through Colorado.
I hear that.
Oh, really?
It's, uh.
Of course, now South Dakota, right?
It's pretty good when you flip it over and your picture's on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, it's almost even.
Maryland, so they go to South Dakota now, isn't it? In Montana?
I don't know.
Think it is.
I'm so naive, road department, when I was traveling west and I saw the signs.
What do they call it? All of a sudden, here you have.
Cannabis?
Cannolis.
What the heck's cannabis? Like cannabis?
What's cannabis, my wife was saying. Are you serious?
Stay in or something that.
Yes, I am.
Wouldn't that transfer to anything there?
Oh, you silly person.
Yeah.
That's what can kill you. You think you're ahead of the game and then all of a sudden, here they come.
I'll send one project and.
Yeah. Uh-oh. Get all those.
Thanks for writing on my bracket.
Hey, so if we've got unorganized roads and need a secondary roads, we got some money sitting there.
We're gonna talk to the boss here.
We do.
You got about fifteen seconds.
Just in case. This number seven COVID funds.
We're gonna cover it.
That possibly we cover when we do the roads. Because it's related to their budget. So when we get down there, we can go over. Well, we fill up the gas can.
Got three. Got three quarter on.
That was very nice of you. Thank you.
Recorder's on?
It's on.
Okay, nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting the First County Commission to Order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have liquor licensing needs and authorization we have to review.
Okay.
Is that for other business?
Yeah, probably other business. We'll put it at the same time we do the Bueller Chamber, the number four.
For any particular? You get liquor license and gaming license?
Yep.
Yep.
For any particular entity?
Um, one is for Bueller Convention and Visitors. They want to do a health cabinet, Dakota Walley Classic. And then it's the liquor license for the Dakota Walley Classics for sports and sports stuff.
For the Walley Tournament, then?
Yep.
Yep, starts tomorrow.
Correct.
Well.
Is it tomorrow or Friday? I thought it was Friday.
It's a two-day deal.
It's Friday. It's Thursday.
Okay. Nah, it's not the place, I guess.
Soon.
I was gonna ask a question, but that's not the place for discussion.
Any other agenda items? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Wayne. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
How about I?
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marb?
Aye.
How about I? That motion passes. Minutes from the July sixth meeting?
Move to approve?
Motion by Jean to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none?
Oh, yes. On the, let's just look at the minutes. One, two, page three. Uh, I'm trying to, paragraphs one, two, three, four, five. It says, where the paragraphs that start swear move to amend wording, blah, 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 okay?
Okay.
On the very second to the last line, it says, all voted any.
Oh.
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 Okay.
I don't, okay, I just saw that one typo. That's it?
Okay.
Very good.
We'll, uh, we'll note that typo, but otherwise the, the minutes, I think, could be approved as presented. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Marb?
Aye.
How about I? Motion passes. Bill time.
Such a big correction, huh?
Yeah.
We'll give one start it so they can.
Well, it's still work, it's just not directed.
I know. Yeah, I won't do this. I don't. I'll keep looking for a sticking.
Well, voted any amount.
Any and all.
Here we go. The darn nails, huh? How big is that pile?
Decent.
It's got some girth to it.
The word is two.
Two.
Too big?
Too big. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was like T W O, T O, T O O.
The latter.
I was having a interesting conversation with my ten-year-old the other day about adjectives. And I said, would you rather be a giant midget or a midget giant? He goes, I, I don't know.
It's a tough question now.
This bill brings to mind my vacation. Wheel doesn't match this guy's.
Did you lose a wheel?
Both of them. I walked on one side of the camera.
Both of them? Well, one of them come off and took out the other one?
That's a good policy. Oh, yeah, I wasn't watching that close.
But that's what usually happens on.
The bearing seas up.
Where's Flagton?
Uh, very northwest corner of the state.
Oh, really? Like up by Crosby?
Well, not as far west as Crosby. Um, so if you go up to Bowbells and then west on Highway five, I think it's before you hit to Columbus. Might be after Portal and before Columbus. I've been there a few times.
Right.
The bearing nuts was that tight? However.
If you go like a township north, you're in Canada.
Basically. Unless you're dealing with.
I heard that the Williston area just got hammered. They had like baseball-sized, you know?
I just hear recently.
Yeah.
They've had a tough year.
Get him almost. Couple of different. Was it Wildrose, that blue Quonset Safari? Combine set in there?
One of my coworkers or husband works up there and he was centering pictures and the buildings were just destroyed. Just came down and stuff. I didn't hear that.
Tight.
Yeah.
That, that little thing caused me terrible. Both axle? All, all the brakes and hogs in two places. And an extra day where I didn't want to be. Liza?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, have you done your annual laser experiment?
Taser.
Taser?
Uh, we actually switched to pepper ball, so I don't have taser. I work for the state though, so.
I know you were telling me one day that you actually did it so you could.
Yeah, I, yep. I actually, I did not do the pepper ball because I do not like OC. I've already been OC'd already, so I don't like that.
What is pepper ball? My first time I heard that word.
It's like, you know those OC sprays or the sprays that they use for like, um, like bears sometimes and stuff like that? They have special ones for humans that we use, but this is like in a paintball, like kinda.
See?
And then we have like guns that'll shoot that out and hit people and then it explodes when it hits them and then that's how we get the OC.
So you don't have to get that close to them yet?
Right.
It's a paintball, the.
Pretty much. Yep.
One's that paint, it's pepper.
And, yeah, it, yeah, it's the same chemicals and then it has the same like reactions.
So how dense is that, that it feels, that atmosphere where that person is where he, he can't avoid it? It's a pretty.
It depends on how close you are to them and what they're wearing and.
Put the red pepper.
If you're inside or outside and all that kinda stuff too.
Might have to reload it.
Yeah, and some of us have like, it almost looks like a machine gun. Kinda, I don't have that. I just have the handgun.
Oh, don't say machine, don't say machine gun. Oh, my gosh.
I know. Looks like it. But, but our deputies have tasers, so.
I, I introduce you to Bonnie.
And the other one, it's another type of.
Pepper ball, huh?
Yep.
Pep.
I don't know, that is. Who's that? The word assault in it and that gets people wound up too.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sure you remember Posse Comitatus. You don't know that?
Posse Comitatus.
Yeah.
That one, that's on, uh, that Disney show.
Oh, that was a group in North Dakota. Did you keep a copy?
Oh, yeah.
We do a real understanding of different.
Mike James Town. Medina.
Yep. This is for Ken Miller and.
Thank you.
This is pit on that stone or something that's been receding in there. My brother was in a horse ride, we lived on here on thirty one.
Yeah.
But I haven't go.
I haven't either.
Last name had the word Posse in it. I don't know, I should have tried and grabbed it somewhere.
Repair spring hanger on trailer.
Pick it on here.
Got my springs, but they were okay. Whole new axle, all the hubs, all the brakes, all the bearings.
These days in the first county.
Seems like a lot, doesn't it, for their little ways? You're a farmer here. Just wanna ask you, just a curious question. Do you see that? Your old room, root grass? Oh, man. Isn't that my brother's root grass? No, it's different? Yeah, I think it's, it gets like a broom, but it's real slender. Gets about eight high. Does it move with risos and receding? Uh, I don't know. Red, your root can take over your. Yeah, yeah, and, and this isn't quite that invasive, no. And then if they use metal broom, it supposedly is not supposed to seed out so much, but I can almost say different. It really took over more than I wanted to, but, um. You know, in the seventies, broom was very popular and liked a lot, but now everybody's kind of sifted, it's taken over there.
Pastures or whatever.
Pastures and. Healing.
Yeah.
And then. Then try some crested wheatgrass on top of that. That'll be invasive. Radio damage or antenna damage or something.
Tom Gilliam.
When you think it would.
Okay.
Sauce?
Yeah.
Because.
What else would be covered then?
Yeah. Fits right in.
I don't think they need. I see anything.
Kinda like the boy named Sue.
Because this is on a tower, right?
Do you?
Like a mule, like a crocodile.
We wish that, that must sit out. And ask Carmen.
Wait, we got a question here. Uh, the electronic communications repaired a tower here due to ice storm. And, uh, anyhow, the county had basically pay, was paying a hundred percent of that. I was wondering if some of this isn't covered under our insurance?
If I remember correctly, it's not. Um, but Carmen will be here today.
Because it's kind of a, kind of a act of God deal. It's like if the wind blew it over or, you know, this was an ice storm. So I'm wondering what they do cover. I always wonder that, once you turn the. Yeah, that one you might be wanting to.
I don't think this one's gonna be appropriate.
No, I know, it's not tight.
Is it gonna look? Prices, that's not bad.
Tan original, I don't know about these.
This is a.
Yeah.
One in question.
Kind of shady.
This one's kinda sketchy.
Nice sketchy.
Yeah.
Yeah, never trusted. I snuck it away, I snuck it away from them. I figured that's what you were gonna do to me. But you give a go.
They'll be asking for a check.
Well, it'll be signed.
Kind of like spending up those nights.
I was looking, oh my gosh, can't even fit it on the sheet.
Yeah. Oh, here's another one that's handwritten.
It's okay.
Yeah, might be. She has a nice shirt. Almost started, huh?
Chain reaction?
My interest is.
Hmm.
Urbanism, I guess. This is all their gas.
Seven, you know.
Was it just because they use their lines card?
Must be the new contract price.
So, I mean, that must be curd.
Travis would get his natural gas going and get that up to the county.
Sure, I'm trying.
Gotta get that order stamped and really go.
You know, if I had twenty million, I'd make it happen, Jean.
Get easy, can I still use it?
It's the same, same account number.
Yeah. And we know. We know we're coming around to try to get natural gas into the area.
Hi, Dallas. Alex, do you know about this, uh, wax purchase? We have sheriff and tax force and then we have like a lawnmower thing on the.
That's, um, for maintenance. That would be Jim's.
Would that be a different cover then, huh?
Why, it's, it's attached to the same one as the.
Cause they use the same card. They use the wax card.
Okay. So.
It's actually a wax in the heart that they use. So it's split up between maintenance and the sheriff's.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Alex.
That was what I was assuming, but assuming goes.
Yeah. You're the same account.
They say nobody's suing anything, right, Travis?
That's right.
That's right.
But, but in my field, as long as you state your assumptions.
You and me.
As long, in my field, as long as you state your assumptions, you're okay.
That is okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Grandfather everyone or what they need to do, you know?
When you can't find the answer, here's my assumption.
This is what I think it could be.
Virgin fists or some stuff in this house that. That's fuel.
Fuel?
Is there a dispatch in there? Is that sire?
Sire, sire.
Yeah.
Yeah. New string on the can. Hello?
We'll charge you.
Nope. Liza, just for curiosity, if this handcuff bill times ten, does that mean it's size ten or something like that?
No, that means that they got ten of them. Cause remember like turn this statement, it said we gotta make sure that we have enough. In, in case we have something happen, cause we have to detain all these people.
Two hundred and thirty dollars for cannibal. Twenty-three dollars each?
Yeah.
They tie wraps, we have.
Yeah, they're handcuffs.
Very, very expensive. Well, they'll do like they did at the Capitol yesterday. Pretend that they were covered.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
Now you will pretend you're covered.
Assume the position.
Oh, she will get pink going all the way.
Right?
Yeah.
What about you?
Pepper ball.
Can, can question it, huh? Yep. All the conversation.
Prince is dead.
Trying to lift the spirits up.
I hope I can answer a question. Liza, can you?
Yeah.
If an inmate needs medication, I mean, can we bill the inmate?
We have, um, Amanda's done a good job about getting insurance, but if the insurance doesn't cover it all, it's county cover because they're here.
But in the end, can we bill the inmate?
No. Cause they're in our care. It was not their choice to be in our care. Well. They'll say it was not their choice.
I follow you. No, but my basic question was.
Yeah.
Are we able to, okay.
But for the federal prisoners, we get the first, right?
That's through the feds. Yep. That's different. Yeah. But if Amanda had gone and made sure that we all get a special insurance for inmates here, we would have to have the whole cost on us. So she's done a very nice job about getting that for us, so we don't have to pay the whole cost of it.
Well, Carmen's here. We could ask her that question on that. Tower.
Yeah.
Carmen, we had a bill for fixing, what was it, the radio tower?
The radio tower, like the antenna on the radio tower?
Yes, up north at Haiti.
Yeah, is there a reason why like our insurance wouldn't cover?
Yeah, because they don't cover damages. Yeah, they didn't cover those wind damages. And, and he gave me a letter and I'm sure the auditor got it too. But it was something where the insurance did not cover it.
Huh.
So, I could get you the letter and send it to you.
You kinda ask him what he does cover?
Wasn't that?
Me, me, but tell me.
Right?
It's an act of God.
Cause we were just thinking it was an act of God, so then that would be something that is.
Well, you'd be, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
But he said it, and I, and he gave me the letter, so it, did you want me to run it? I'm not gonna guarantee I can find it in five minutes, but.
No, that, we just wanted to make sure that it was tried to run through insurance, that's all.
Right, right.
It was, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, Shannon put it through and then I worked with it. Absolutely.
So, we did our due diligence.
Yeah.
And we got denied.
And we got told, no.
And we don't know what it's got.
Right. We just know now that that is not.
Do they have a policy?
Right. Do we need to adjust?
Right, right, right.
Well, I thought you could do that, huh?
I do.
So, I think there's two. Are there two places like the basketball, one's a pretty nice football court?
Basketball court, we must add one back here.
Yeah. You gotta have rec.
Yeah.
Snail mail there or something.
Do you have a invoice here for unemployment insurance? I'm not gonna be a big trouble, just curious.
Well, I think that's the part of the sale or something.
Cause I was looking at, we don't have a. He's still considering employee cards, and he must be receiving unemployment from another employer. But since he gets unemployment costs. And it doesn't make sense. When an employee gets unemployment from another employer, if you are a previous employer, you can also get charged, cause they go back quarters. And you can't fight those on person.
Let's just suck it up and pay it.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Okay. I've seen it before, yeah.
I'm sure it will come to an end.
So, uh, Gene, do you know what you need to do if you wanna go use that basketball court?
Oh, really?
Do you know what you need to do if you wanna go use that basketball court?
Sue it down.
Yeah.
Do you not pass go?
Just to make sure that we are.
Yeah.
Can you do some, ask, not an agenda questions, Carmen?
Uh, I think so.
Carmen, just curious, off the top of your head, I guess, just guessing. How many radios have we purchased on the new siren project?
Okay, we've only purchased them for the sheriff.
How many?
For the sheriff, and I believe, um, maybe thirteen.
Since you're next, why don't you just come up here?
Two mobiles, and then we ordered. Cause I know we ordered eleven here recently. But those are on order like everybody else's, the fire department's ambulance, it says like a sixty-nine month.
Wait, you're in.
Did me to put you on the spot, I'll just send you an email, just try to give me and help you.
Okay, cause I have everything in the file. I have copies of everything. So, yeah. I wanna say eleven were mobiles, and two were. And those two mobiles we have, cause we ordered those like a year ago. So, those are gonna be our test radios. We start exercising.
And those are the ones in the newest rigs, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
We'll put them back in the hills to see how well they test.
Yeah.
We got a meeting, right? Meeting for you guys to finish those.
Yeah, this was an un-adjented question, because you were here.
Don't come early, don't come late.
Well, I'm not early now.
No, it's right on time.
I'm only half done here, so you gotta wait a second.
That's okay.
We'll get you next one.
Board, I have a question that I've asked this before. It's uncomfortable, but I need to ask it again. We have a county employee. Buying material for the county to his shop. I guess what I expect, or I'm assuming, if you guys correct me, if we need a battery or something, we go to NAPA or Seneca or someplace, we pay that price minus the taxes. We don't go through. An employee's business to do that, because he possibly has additional markup and taxes. So, it appears as a conflict of interest. That. Going through an employee who has a side business, go get. And it's a little bit uncomfortable for me. Cause his invoice does not show, oh, for one, I don't know. Where you bought the battery, did you buy, let's just say, for example, say we buy the battery from NAPA. And as an individual company, is there a markup? And then is there taxes? It's not showing up in the invoice.
I think if you, um, ask that employee, he will fully disclose, um, his cost and his markup, if any.
Okay. Alice, I'm gonna ask the auditor to do that first, please. Provide documentation. Where you bought the battery, what the cost was. The question is, is there markup on it? And are we paying the tax? Please. I guess I'd like a copy of the invoice where you bought the battery. Please. And you probably knew this, you probably emailed that road crossing, the rest of the stuff. And the shop where we, we'd be for that record. What's this all about? Mm-hmm. I, I knew that a long, long time ago. I see it's from. I don't know, I don't know exactly where it is. It's the county road there, and I don't know, the railroad requested, you know, to be lit up, because they couldn't see the train. Also, Travis, the, uh, that Mercury Light, you know, castlers lived there, the railroad crossing, we'd be, Mercury Light, uh, say that. Yeah, they will filter some of the intersection.
Does he have the red, says juice for free?
I suppose we still have to eat up to two hundred and snap their solar by like, over now.
Inch it on over?
Inch it on over.
Kind of table, could you run from that solar panel?
That's an injury question.
Right?
Yeah.
Not my favorite.
I think I'm gonna have too much of voltage drop on that.
Is that your assumption?
No, that's what's. And then I'll get, somebody asked me, well, why don't you just go wireless with that electricity?
Just turn on your. Oh, an E nine one one bill.
What's that?
You're sitting there, so I am smart off.
I'll spread a two hundred. Is he, is he coot's with, with the dentist or something, or what?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's just giving.
You gotta have your brave candy, come on.
I think he's coot's with the dentist.
This is a tough one, because. Where you can't, you almost can't even ask, because they're doing it also. So, it's like. It's too bad. Guess we gotta.
You know, the parents sit and sleep too well after that parade.
They did, and they got so hot.
Kids, no, kids were all sugar.
All hopped up.
Yeah.
Parents lived just fine.
We have NAC and N R C code, it's N W S W R A. Is that? Trying to see it further, it might be here.
N W S W.
It's N R, looks like N R, N D S W R A, twelve month membership. For.
Southwest.
Southwest district.
Regional authority.
That's wrong. Is it, no, I think that makes it a landfill.
That's a landfill.
Yeah.
Oh, it's candy straight up, I was saying Carmen, I wasn't reading.
Hey, sorry, Carmen, I got shot.
Yeah, I have to forget, he just, he's just removed by Zara.
Like, wait.
Three of us.
I know.
Come in more often early, this is where I got someone to pick on.
Okay, great, off.
We're a, we're a better target, so.
This one sits candy on it too, so.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for a sample.
They were sitting at the outpost forever. I don't even know how much they got left after going through the parade. I heard it was a nice long one. It's after being, having a proper.
Well, one's the fee per state, and on the other one is the, uh, for the bond.
Oh.
It's just for, um. I think the most common mistake on North Reed is where it writes my condition expires, writing down the wrong date.
Cause they just have stamps.
Yeah, there's not supposed to be on that form anymore. But people, you know, they can't change the ways, so they always put it on there.
Oh.
I think the policy is, you know, you can put one tool in, in, in meeting instead of.
Oh, you got to tell them off. Look at that.
And their type, do you?
Fancy. They're just not giving you.
Back in seventy, before they were reviewing the hazards and chemicals. They had a neighbor. That took that business from spring worms. He wasn't careful with stuff. United. Uneducated, you know.
I guess it's too far behind them. Turn them on.
Yeah. More calls.
That's, still happens, don't it?
Got some contoxic cleaning solutions out there, but. Shit, it isn't clean all the time.
But you're sure, with the gunk removal, all that stuff, it's like, you have a lot of touch ups.
Have we looked into getting long distance included in our West River?
Yeah, it's actually on our agenda.
There it is.
And then we have it, yeah.
So, yes, we did.
There's six under other business, I think.
Gene must have been doing paperwork.
This used to, this used to signal the end, but this, he's still got a file.
No, he's looking at something else, this is the last one I might have here.
No, it's gonna be down the road here.
We had some W's afterwards.
Yeah.
We got some latecomers on some, uh, vouchers there, so we'll probably cancel them. Pro rate them.
Yeah. Pro rate.
There you go. There you go.
Oh, we mustn't have it turned yet, huh?
Turned off, turned off. So I have a wonderful, they must be.
If you think the
They must be without these, this schedule, something.
Return this in place.
Is that not should be in your account?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the bills? No. You're done, right?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Sign on, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Mar?
Aye.
How about I? That motion passes. Now we got Carmen up here, joint powers.
All right, I'm here to, uh, cause I know you guys are looking at the budgets this afternoon, but I met with Oliver County Commission regarding, uh, the twenty-three budget. And they wanted to renew our contract before the budgets get finalized. So then that way we know we solidly have them to support the nine-one-one EM position. The thing is, good deal.
Right.
So, um,
Right.
I emailed Terry and Dean and CC'd Ashley regarding, uh, the dispatch portion, cause that's the sheriff's side of it. And and then they have August fourth as their next meeting to go, if they want it upped or changed, they have to go meet with the commission. But right now, what I'm showing you here, okay, so the top page is the nine-one-one budget estimates. So what I do for Oliver only is this is what I put in, my numbers, which includes an assistant, a full-time assistant. And that's why, um, I wanted to go through this, well, and it's for Oliver too. So this is what the numbers are that you guys have, but then from that, Oliver's portion, they're gonna have three hundred hours of the nine-one-one. And then the eighty-one dollars per hour includes the salary and all the benefits. Last year, just with me, it was like forty-eight, thirty-five an hour. Well, this eighty-one includes a full-time assistant and all the benefits for both. And they were okay with that. So, um, and then of course you can see down there that health insurance, they got a portion of, well, uh, that travel premium. So the budget, Oliver County will pay forty-one thousand seven hundred, part of my total budget that I'm putting into worship. And then minus that, so in the end for nine-one-one expenses, it's gonna be two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred forty-two. The thing is, if we don't have this budget with Oliver County, then I don't need this. You know what I mean? I'm a one-county person. But because of all the work and because we're keeping that database, and you know, I've been talking to different people, I can't do my mapping if I don't have that. So it is really important, and I've talked to, I use it with the post office, the cities, the bus route. I would say at least conservatively ninety percent of all offices in both counties use my address. And we work, and it's a way to look at, in all the cities when they have a new address, we always work together to put those new addresses in there right, so I can get, you know what I mean? We all work together on it. And for us to lose that, and you wanna go to engineering group and that's what they did way before nine-one-one, it's very expensive. And then, yeah. And I told that to Oliver too, and they totally agreed, they wanna keep it too. So.
They wanna keep the mapping system that you're using?
Yes. So that we can have the map, we can produce their, their responders use that mapping.
How does that mapping compare to the statewide mapping? Isn't there a statewide mapping program that's coming? Or a lot of places?
No, it's in place.
Okay.
We don't use it because it doesn't have information. It doesn't have the information now. It has a dog on a map, lunch to the left, an address. But they're going away from all names and things, yeah, the downs, but we still have to keep that up. So basically the only requirement for that one, yes, the road system is accurate, it points on the map with the address attached or accurate. Where this database has names, addresses, a lot of more information. And I can pull from it information to create maps. I can't pull that from the state. Keep it up here. And I work with postal, school, everybody to keep the information up.
Is there going, I'm not sure if I can even ask, ask this intelligently, I'll try to. Is there gonna come a time where what we're doing, they'll say, no, we don't want that anymore? We wanna just use the statewide so everybody's the same?
Well, okay, here's the question is, we're gonna lose the map. And like I said.
We're gonna lose which mapping?
The mapping I create for all the entities.
Mm-hmm.
I can't, I can't make maps unless I have that database to pull it from, I can't do it from the state.
Okay.
These databases and, you know, I put my information and actually because of our database locally, we keep accurate. And then I can, I pull from there and I give to the state what they need.
Uh-huh. So yours is more detailed?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I understand what you're doing, yeah.
Right. But then because I've gone through school and I'm G I S tech, I've been able to create these maps. And the county will pay me to go to school online through that state. And I've been able to create these maps. And they become very useful for a lot of departments. Even the post office told me the other day, they don't know if they do it on their map, because then they can look at an address, they can see where they're at, and then together we can figure a good address, which is important.
I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I like what you're doing. How does this work with GPS? I'm just using my own address for example, cause GPS you can't get to my house yet.
Right.
Right.
Cause that's a private code.
Okay.
Google Maps is private.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but my information, putting it on the state map is our hope for those companies to come and get it done. I, you know, get their data so they can dump it into there.
I see.
It's more accurate, so I say in time, it's gonna get that.
Mm-hmm.
My state. But at least we got that state map now, so that they even have that source.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
So as far as the joint agreement, would be another five year term?
Yeah, um, yes, five years. Um, and then, oh, okay, so on the nine-one-one, I just wanted to show you what Oliver puts toward this and the bottom line. And for the nine-one-one, on, since it's separate from the general, what I did down here is I just put, uh, estimates of the money in that fund. And what it kind of looks like with this budget. So, and then, and yeah. And then two, then the next page is the EM portion of it. And then you can also see this side, what Oliver pays. So on the EM side of it, um, we've got EMPG for next year, we'll pay about twenty-one thousand of that budget, plus Oliver County will pay the twenty thousand four hundred thirty-seven. So in the end, there's just cost for the general fund will be the eighty-three three sixty-five, not counting any possible regular. But we don't have a mediation grant would be done with that. You know what I mean? I don't foresee anything next year going above and beyond.
Okay.
So anyway, that, and that's why, and then I did include this, so once the sheriff talks to them, does what they need to do, then I wanna put this together. And then, um, and then what we do is get them to sign it, and then I'll bring it to you as. But mine, uh, numbers on here are gonna be the eighty-one dollar per hour. They pay half all office expenses as normal and one-sixth in equipment and things like that, as a one-sixth in population. And then the help with dispatch and fee, that is where the sheriff.
So there'd be no action today, what you're just?
No.
You just wanna give us a heads up?
For you guys, you're aware, and, and I guess I felt it was a, a huge support in giving a full-time assistant.
Okay.
Can I ask them?
Go ahead.
You've got like, uh, one-sixth. Do, do, where did you get the one-sixth? Out of curiosity. Okay, thank you.
Two counties, they're one-sixth in population.
Okay.
Sounds like that.
No, it does not, because that is between the sheriff's office and the county over there.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Carmen?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen.
Let's, let's take a nap. Can you order some documents?
Okay. What are, what are these for? Is this?
That just passed down, that came from our auditor.
Those are just the budget worksheets from department heads.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Can we take a little break? Listen, can we take a recess?
Yeah, let's take, uh, recess until ten o'clock.
Ten? Okay.
Okay.
I am.
She is.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Nice to meet you. Samantha Melber.
Yeah. Talked to Tiana from the chamber, Jerry.
Yeah.
She asked me to interrupt something, uh, that it was, I think it's the license for beer, it's been off the, the wall of class.
Yeah, that's on the, that's on the agenda today, so if we get that signed off, then I'll give you a copy of that.
Okay. Actually, tell me about something, I thought it was approved already, so. Um, and then also the site authorization for the JAL卡.
Yep, that's.
I know, that's on the agenda, okay.
Perfect. No problem, it's nice to meet you, and I'm still learning names too, I'm, I'm fairly new, so.
Yeah, I've been doing this since, what, uh, June thirteenth?
May sixteenth, right here, so. Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
So I'm still, uh, I actually kept home here for standing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, good, my parents just bought a house in Stanley too, so they're kind of inconsistent moving. And I'm originally from Oregon, so they're, yeah, moving a lot of stuff, but. Yeah, that's my father-in-law.
How cute.
Yeah. Wayne Melber is my father-in-law.
Well, I'm a small state.
Yeah. And actually, he lives in Hazen, no?
Really?
Yeah.
I gotta get touch it, I'm a, I'm a boy, never been a good.
I mean, it hasn't gotten any better, so.
I'm getting there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. So they moved out to Colorado to help take care of his mom. And, uh,
How far off is our?
Rule.
Oh, two minutes fast again.
Keeps us on pace, right?
Yeah.
Secretary Anna.
Samantha's here. Or do we need to wait for Als?
Let us.
Can you make Samantha take notes?
Can you take notes?
I sure can.
Okay. Well, reconvene the regular meeting here, uh, we got next up is Ken with the highway permit. Morning.
Thing I got is, uh, utility permit seventeen forty-three, it's from West River Telephone.
Pull the mic in front of you, please. Thank you.
West River Telephone, uh, permit number seventeen forty-three. It's for fiber optic to, uh, Tanner Dahlback residence where he's building a house, west or north and west of Golden Valley. They need to cross our seventh street and then Seventy-Fifth Avenue Southwest, so two locations.
Are they boring it?
Yep.
Yeah? Do you have any concerns at all, Ken?
I don't know, locations are good.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve utility permit seventeen forty-three.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Sign on, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Jean?
Aye.
How about I? That motion passes. Anything else, Ken?
Uh, the only other thing is we were trying to replace our, get some quotes on, uh, a plow truck to replace the one we have. Cause that one we have is, we had gotten it, it was a state one too, but it's got quite a few miles and the frame is actually starting to, it's in not so good shape. So, um, Eldra and Dennis went down yesterday to Pro Cart, the guy had bought it through the state DOT when they had that auction. He's right at, uh, I think it's a two thousand five, it's got two hundred and some thousand miles. Um, it doesn't have the wing and the plow, but he wants forty-seven thousand for the truck. And then, uh, Eldra had just talked to Burt's, they're the ones that, uh, the, the wing and the, uh, plow. So the wing and the plow and the plum it in, uh, to where, with the plow is, it would be thirty-three thousand four eighty-five. And then comes up to eighty thousand four hundred eighty-five.
Can you say that number again, please?
Uh, what, there's a docking, so it's forty-seven eight for the truck. We just found some info, yesterday they looked at it, and so I'm just figuring, put it in front, so we won't lose the truck if we can get it, I mean. Um, and then the wing and the plow, and then to mount it, it's, uh, Bert does that for falls, they're down by, uh, Moorhead. Or they're in Moorhead, Minnesota. So it's thirty-three thousand four hundred eighty-five for that wing, the plow, and then to plumb that in, all in, to put it on. So we're right at, what would it be at, one, zero, zero, five, eight, twelve, eight, eleven, one, five?
Fifty.
Eighty-one, two eighty-five. Is that what you're coming up with, eighty-one, two eighty-five? Yeah, eighty-one, two eighty-five.
And is this, is this already in your budget?
Yeah, we have, the only thing, well, we got to pay for that, uh, rental on that John Deere tractor, we got a, uh, John Deere, one, the only motor grader we have leased yet. But that's thirty-some thousand, so we still have, after that, we still have a hundred and twenty thousand. So we would have a little over, little under forty thousand if we were to get this. But we, that other one is, like I said, the frame's rusted on it, it's not a, and this one's in pretty decent shape. A new one, I talked with Kevin Kaylee with the underbody and all that, you're looking at two hundred and seventeen thousand for a brand-new one. Which, I, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice, but, um, and they're over a year out, so you have to put your order in and then they build it, so.
Any salvage value on the old one, or?
No.
Would that be just the county asset that we put in?
Yeah, I mean, we could use it for a spare if we, you know, if the other one would happen or we, I don't know, I mean.
Do you have a sander on the back of that, or?
That, we have that de-icer tank on that one, on the one we have now, yep.
So would that be transferred to the other one then, the de-icer tank, or?
Uh, yeah, yep, it can be, but it's also got that sand thing in the back too, if we, we can either, either one.
Okay.
Probably go with the, uh, the de-icer for the simple fact that we got those, we got two other sanders, so, or actually three, we got that other, uh, drop-in one that we got from the city of Beulah, about four or five years ago, and then we got that green sander and then that old yellow one, so.
Any questions from the commission on the plow truck? Is it something we want to proceed on?
From what I see here, Ken, we have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand left in your equipment line?
Yep.
Okay.
Like I say, we still got that tractor payment to John Deere.
That's thirty-seven hundred, right?
That's, well, for the motor grader to, for John, that was thirty-seven thousand five hundred, I think, and then the John Deere tractor that we use for mowing ditches, that one we, I don't know, we just paid for two hundred and fifty hours, it's, I think it's forty-five hundred or something like that, it's over four thousand.
See, so the biggest thing is the motor grader lease payment, right?
Right, yep.
Yeah.
Like I say, it should be right around a hundred and twenty thousand after those two are taken off, and then this is eighty-one thousand two eighty-five with the wing, the, uh, the plow, and then the truck. So roughly less than forty thousand left in the equipment line item.
I think somebody asked us, and I wasn't paying attention, what's the salvage value on our other one?
I don't know, we may probably hit no more than ten thousand for it, because it's rusted out pretty good, I mean, it's.
And what year is that one?
I don't even know, it's an old state truck, it's.
Got miles on it?
Yeah, it's got miles, and like I say, the frame, I mean, it's to the point where it's not even safe to drive, that stuff.
Well, the, the concern would be, um, I guess, uh, constructive criticism is, uh, if you need a new truck, why would you keep the old truck, and if we would keep the old truck to do other services, what kind of expenses are we going to have to maintain the old truck, and we still got to carry, you know, insurance, insur, and all that, which, I mean, it's not that much, but still.
I mean, we can look at that option too, but I don't know how much, I haven't checked in what it's worth, I mean, I know we're not going to be able to trade it in at this, you know.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's more or less, you're going to have to put it on Biz Man or put it on an auction thing for open bid and go from there, you might get a thousand bucks if you do it that way, I mean, but.
I know.
That's an option, but, I mean, instead of keeping it, but.
That's, that's the cost of doing business, I guess where I'm at, Ken, is if we've been getting by with one, and we buy another one, I would like to get rid of the old one.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I agree.
I mean, even though it's, it's hard to, a pill to swallow sometimes, because we don't get anything for it, but.
Still the maintenance on it.
It's still, it's still an expense to keep it.
Right. The, yeah, we can put it on one of them bid things or whatever, I mean, we can always turn it down too if it's not worth.
Right.
What we want or think it's worth, I don't know, I mean, it's a.
Ken, where, where was this truck here from?
Well, it was through the DOT, but it's.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, and then like a third-party bought it when they had their auction.
Oh, God.
And they really didn't put, you know, they had, the DOT had put a deal out saying that they were going to have an auction, but they really didn't list the stuff they had, so.
I know.
Yeah, and then that, this guy had picked up, I think he got three or four of them.
Okay. You both think it's a good deal?
Dennis went and looked at it, mechanic, and then Eldron looked at it too, and so, I, I mean, it's way better shape than what we have now, that's for sure, and I don't, just, I don't, can't see spending two hundred thousand on a brand-new truck, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice, but. We can get this and have a new wing, a new plow on it, and, uh, I guess that's a chance to take, it's used, but, I mean, like I say.
But you said Dennis looked it over and he didn't see any major?
He ran it, took it for a ride, drive, I mean, it's.
Can we have the, the staff that would be able to put the plow on and put the wing on?
Well, no, they do that, that's what that Burt's does.
The thirty-three.
That's that thirty, the thirty-three thousand, that's the everything.
To actually have it installed on and everything.
Yep, and the, and the equipment, yep.
Okay. Okay.
I move that we proceed with purchasing the new truck and disposing of the old.
Okay, motion by Marv to proceed with the purchasing of the truck that Ken presented, and then start the process of disposing of the old truck once we get the new one in. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? I'll second that for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Well, I, I don't know for sure to say if we need to dispose of that truck, I think we want to just keep our, uh, window open there, uh, if you make it in your motion that we have to dispose it, then we got to dispose it, well, this, this other truck, who knows, something can go south on us sideways, and then we're sitting there at the time truck list because we had to dispose of the other truck, I think we want to just, we, that's the intent, but I don't know, Marv, if we really want to put that into motion, it just, uh, we'll, we'll move it if we see that it needs to be fit to be moved. And, uh, because otherwise, you have to get rid of it, and then, like I said, something may go sideways with this thing here until we got this thing online, uh, we don't know exactly what, what it's all about, and then, or truck list and the snowstorms here, so, just something to think about, okay?
Okay, any other discussion?
I would reiterate what Wayne just said, it's, um, a concern about, um, I would like to have a note that we give consideration to getting rid of the truck we have. But, um, along with what you said, you know, if we only, we only get five hundred dollars, maybe we can hang on to it for now, but, um, I would like to see it eventually dispos, disposed of, that we get rid of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to, oh, I, my, my concern is that you come back to us in a year from now and say, you know, you got to stick twenty thousand dollars into the old truck, well, let's, let's, before we do that, I'm going to say, I'm going to, I, I at that point would say, no, let's just get rid of it, even if we sell it for junk, or if we just junk it.
Right, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll say aye.
Jean?
I'll just say nay.
Okay, that motion fails.
But I'll make a mo, if, if we can still discuss the subject, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the purchase of the new truck with the plow.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by Jean to proceed with the purchase of the new, uh, truck, is there a second?
Sorry, not new truck, the truck, sorry.
The truck that was presented. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
No, I know.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes, you can proceed to get that, uh, truck.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, do you have anything else, Ken? Said no, okay, um, we can move on to some of this other business here before Darby gets in, um, June sheriff fees.
Make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand ninety-two dollars and thirty-eight cents sheriff fees.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Liza.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Are the, um, jail fees included in this, is that why it's gone up so much, or is there any other reason? Or was it just a busy month?
Yeah, I see it includes the federal money, as far as I understand.
Okay, I just, it was way higher than we've normally seen, so just wanted to make sure, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. June court fees?
I move to approve June court fees of twelve thousand forty dollars.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the court fees, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Recorder fees?
I move to re, approve recorder fees of six thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, Beulah, Beulah Chamber liquor license, this is all by the Total Light Classic, missing me?
Um, yes, another item on our agenda, which we added liquor license, is that the same? Okay. And this is for the.
Dakota Wild Eye Classic?
I guess we should, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the Beulah Chamber liquor license.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
Okay, my question then is, is this for the Wild Eye Classic this weekend?
Yes.
Is it the liquor license and a gaming license?
They're separate, they're just, they're right there, they do all the application and.
Yeah, so this would be just the liquor.
Just for the liquor.
And it's, yeah, and Sportsmen's is the one extending the liquor license.
Is this a, um, is there a timeframe on this liquor license, is it only for a particular amount of time? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And they've had this previously too, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we handle it because it's in the county.
Right.
If it was within a city jurisdiction, then it would be the cities that have it.
Well, my only question was to ma, to clarify it for the general public, knowing that, uh, we're going to grant them this liquor license, that it's for that specific amount of time and.
And that location.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. And let's do the, the gaming permit, and that's for the CBB?
I moved to approve the gaming permit.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Marv, any discussion?
Um, what, for, is this for the same?
Same event?
It's going to be the same event, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's specifically for the Calcutta.
Correct.
That's going along with the.
Yeah.
And once again, for that timeframe.
So it's just got the date of, yeah, the twenty-first through the twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Marv, did you second that?
Yes, aye.
Okay, Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
And I vote aye, that motion passes. Okay. Uh, county credit card?
So, um, they do not handle this changing of the name at the branch level, so I had to call, um, customer service, they're sending us a new form, an application on how we can get that transferred into my name, but there are, when I was just at the auditor's convention, and as you can see here, this credit card through JP Morgan, um, there's twenty-one counties of the fifty-three counties in the state that use this card, and it does offer some other services, like kickbacks, um, you know, no, uh, low to no fees, and so I don't know, you should have this form.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it kind of goes over it, I met with a gentleman, he was down there as a vendor, and, um, there were quite a few other auditors that had, uh, you had been using it for quite some time and have, uh, didn't really have any complaints about it, so we can go further using the card that we have currently, or if this is an option, then you guys can decide if that's something that you want to transfer to, but, like I said, I have to get that information in the mail to get the name changed, so.
Is our current card through a local business?
Okay.
Has our current card met all of our needs?
Yep, the only other thing that it doesn't offer, it doesn't offer any, like, kickbacks or percentages of how much you spend throughout the year, you know, cash backs, so, that's like this card would.
Chairman and board members, I would like to stay with our present card because it's a local county company.
Okay, and the name change is possible?
Yes.
It just takes some time?
Yep.
Okay.
Curious how much time, any idea?
Uh, they said that they were sending the information in the mail, so.
Also.
Like I said, they can't do anything at the branch level, since it's the credit card, if it was the debit card, that's a different story, but.
I would like to leave it the same, also for now, that'd be, but I'm one of, one of five.
Two of five.
Well, I'm one, but, yes.
Have we checked around with other banks to see if they do have a credit card that would give us kickbacks that are within Mercer County?
Not in, within the county, no, but, I mean, that is something that I could look into. This is just an option, it's, you know, like, um, it was just surprising on how many other auditors in other counties were using this card, so that's kind of what surprised me.
Yeah, I know the state, we have to use these, we use JP Morgan, but.
Okay, well, at this point, I guess, just informational and.
Yep.
We decide at a different time we can do that, but I don't, unless anybody has a motion that they would like to switch.
Yeah, I would just appreciate if you could check on some of the other banks, just to see if we have any good. Within Mercer County.
Yep.
Please.
Okay. Uh, moving on, um, West River Telephone phone service?
Is this to move to VoIP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So I did some research and, um, I couldn't understand why the county was paying for long distance when the businesses are offered VoIP where they don't have to pay long distance, so I just did a review of the last three months' home bills, and it's averaging about four hundred to five hundred hours a month that we're paying for long distance throughout the county, I do see the county road is already on VoIP, so they're not paying long distance charges, so that was a good thing, so in review of this, I did call West River, and they said all we have to do is tell them we want to change it to VoIP, we got the equipment in place already, there's no charge to do it, and it would save us about four thousand dollars or more per year if I changed the whole. And it wouldn't change our, you know, you'll still get our capital credit checks and all that, we just won't be doing the long distance charges.
Could there be a little bit higher monthly fee, but we wouldn't pay the?
Yeah, there's a five-dollar monthly charge for a fee, but.
So the only reason, do we have any clue as to why the road department isn't, or what it was made of?
They must have changed to VoIP as soon as they were offered it, or, you know, and they, I don't know why they changed to VoIP, but they did already.
Okay.
The other ones, all the other departments in the county are paying long distance charges.
And we don't know why?
It was probably just never brought up.
It was just never brought, okay.
I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but without something here.
Well, no, that adds up.
It actually is a lot.
Yeah, I'd say that could.
If it's not necessary.
Right, if there's no reason, yeah, yeah.
Why would we donate?
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, we aren't in the position for donating.
And we don't have to change any equipment or anything like that, so it's just, um.
It's just literally a phone call?
Yep.
And it's not going to interrupt anything for like nine-one-one or anything like that, we're all going to be good on that?
I guess we could do a motion just so that we have it.
Just your dividend check won't be so high.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where you'd get it hit, you know.
Right.
Well, I just make a motion then to the county.
Okay.
Move our, move our services to VoIP.
Okay, motion by Jean to go to the VoIP service through West River Telephone for long distances. Okay, motion by Jean to go to the VoIP service through West River Telephone for long distance. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Marv. Any discussion? Seeing none? Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I vote aye. That motion passes.
Thank you for checking on that, Alice. I really appreciate that.
That was real good, good work.
Let's see, we got...
If I follow this in a month, how many years? Fifty in ten years, it just adds up.
Just answer. Um, let's, uh, look at the policy committee applications. I'm assuming the COVID funds might take more than five minutes.
That, uh, that's the one that's gonna be covered under the budget.
Okay.
I'll mention it. Bring it up, and I'll mention it.
Okay. Policy committee application? Is there just one spot open still, or?
Just one spot open, yeah. And I am, I did send out an email to the department heads to see if any of their employees would be interested, and I didn't receive any.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to approve Alice Greensteiner to be appointed to our policy committee.
Okay, motion by Marv. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none? Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Just let me explain.
Okay, ARPA COVID.
Okay, I asked the auditor to update me on the present amount of ARPA and COVID money still available. This will be covered when I do the road department, so the sheet that you received in your packet that looks like this?
Yeah.
Uh, just, let's just disregard it this time. We don't need to look at it. It'll be discussed. The reason I asked was for the road department, and it'll be discussed when we do the road budget. So, it'll be covered.
Okay.
Ten-thirty?
Getting really close to ten-thirty.
I used to do one or two.
I can do my portfolio update.
Okay, so Jean, you wanna do a portfolio update?
I have nothing. I speak, I mean, I can add quite a bunch of adjectives in here. I talked to the, um, clerk of court, that's everything fine. Uh, sheriff's department, uh, everything there is going okay. There'll be some, and we'll, we'll see it in their budget, some, uh, adjustments. Uh, our state's attorney, everything's going okay, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, Marv?
I met with Ken Miller, road department, twice, and with Charlie Hin- Hinckins?
Hinckins?
Hinckins. And, uh, that information will be forthcoming when we talk about the road budget. That's all I have.
Okay, um, fair was last week. Um, I was there several days. I think I saw Liza there. Um, great turnout. I think they had passed their, um, carnival, um, attendance from last year by Saturday morning, so it was pretty good attendance. A lot of animals, a lot of things going on. I think it went pretty well. Um, it was hot, but they can't control that. Um, I haven't had a library board meeting since the last time I gave an update. Um, water resource board, um, they went through their budget, um, last week. Hopefully they submitted that to you, Samantha. I don't know if they have or not yet, but Mark Kaffer. Okay, so, um, that should be in, and that's all the updates I have. Liza?
Um, most of mine are pretty much the same, you know, because we got a couple of them coming in for the department budget review. Um, and then I haven't had ambulance yet, so that'll be next week, so it's about what I have, too.
Okay, Wayne?
Um, we, um, had the weed board, uh, meeting Thursday night, uh, and they finalized, I believe, the budget. I believe it got over here, right, Samantha? And, uh, and, uh, well, the chemical side, we aren't quite sure, because we don't know how much flush of weeds are gonna be coming through yet again. So that's always one of those things, that this rain kind of pushes, uh, things, uh, so you have a little more, uh, overgrowth, and, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that. It's always nice to have rain, so... And, um, we, uh, didn't have, uh, regional airport meeting last, last month, but, like I said, the budget for that is presented and, and over here, so it should be, I think the girls got it as far as I know, so... I believe that's about it. I'll have social service tomorrow and see what's happening there.
Okay. Sounds good. Right on time. Darby, treasurer's report?
I knew you were gonna cut me off, so I... I was gonna say.
Okay. Thank you. Your words are always welcome, Wayne.
Yeah, thanks.
All the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm too short for this side, or too tall for this side. I gotta sit down. As you can see, um, from our June report, which seems kind of a long time ago, but it's not that. That, and now with our June report, we are, come, at the ends and outs, we're seventy-four thousand four eighteen oh three overspent from income to... Payments. And then Marvin asked if we would put on, on that second sheet there, um, some of our income that we've received, and these were state payments for township roads. And that is another reason our income looks so good at this point. We've received a lot of money from the state for the township roads. From House Bill fifteen oh five, so, you know, that, that all makes our coffers look pretty good.
And that was back in January, correct?
Right.
Is that an annual amount? Biannual?
You never know. You never know what you're getting.
It's a one-time deal.
One-time at this point.
It's a one-time bill, yeah.
Every two years, I suppose, when they meet, but you never know what, I mean, what that'll be, and they usually have a formula set. And we're all unorganized, which makes it pretty nice for us, because the county gets all that, where if you have an organized township, you have to...
Split it out.
You know, give it to them, so... I know we're one of the few that have all unorganized townships, so... And then on the back, behind that are the receipts for those two, um, payments we got from them.
Any questions from the commission?
So, so right, Darby, do, them funds are in the receipts here, right?
Yes, they're in, and they're in that two-one-two-seven, which is a road...
Okay.
Road account. But it all comes into our, you know, Union State Bank, which makes, you know, which is our income, which makes our money look good until it's spent. And actually, I think we're a little bit better. Usually we start going, I call it, to the negative side sooner than the end of June, but, you know, we have received a lot of money that, you know, your ARPA funds, and this makes us look pretty good.
And do we have any big payments that we're gonna have to be making?
I'm not on the payments.
Yeah, that's the auditor's side.
That would be Sam.
Right. Do you aren't aware of any big ones coming up?
I would say some of this road stuff would be...
The road stuff, and then also the building improvements.
Right, right.
Gotcha.
We still have quite a few that we have built and we haven't seen from the...
Yeah, them, yeah, them too, yeah.
And Marvin and I had also talked about, we were gonna talk about some interest, um, accounts, but Sam and Don have been working on that, so I think we'll hold that until the next meeting, so, till we can get...
Figure out.
A little more... Information for you, make it so you guys can understand, and so we know where... That is, so...
Interest has been going up, but that's more on the loan side, not so much the savings?
Yeah, not so much, not so much our side work. Our interest-bearing funds are not, um, you know, there was some interesting stuff said at the, um, convention. Uh, one of them is a virtual... Virtual, it, which I think sounds awesome, but I also think...
For the security reasons, it does sound great, but I don't even know if it's something that our bank offers.
Right. Wells Fargo was there and prevent, and presented quite a interesting program on virtual, a virtual card, it's called, where you can pay your bills, which isn't my side of stuff either, but... You, you can pay all your bills, but they only go out once a month at a certain time, and so you don't, you know, all your bills are sent out at a certain time on this card, so then you're...
So you're still, like, um, collecting interest on the, the funds that are in there, but you, the vendor already has the payment, and then with the virtual card, that, they create a one-time card number every time to each vendor, so that way you're not using the same credit card or debit card information or bank account information. So it's supposed to be a lot more secure than always giving the same information to every vendor, or a written check, and written checks are getting so expensive, so that's why they were pushing the virtual card.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you guys do much with ACH or anything?
Almost all our deposits are ACH, and a lot of payments are...
Mostly payroll is ACH.
Right.
Other than that?
Yep.
I would love to go to a lot of ACH, but, like I said, that's discussing with the bank, too, what they're capable of, and they're...
Capable of and secure.
Forward, you know, as some of the bigger banks.
They say the cost of writing one check is right around six dollars.
Yeah.
Which sounds crazy.
It does.
It does.
But I'm sure it's realistic, I mean, yeah.
I...
That's how they push it.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Darby?
Thank you, Darby.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I hope.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Welcome.
Okay. I don't know if we have any other filler stuff here.
Do we, I guess? I think we have to follow up about the social service building, auction house, grocery stores, most of the public...
All that stuff.
I sure appreciate getting all those reports. I know it might sound like a lot, but I was using them a lot, but, uh, when I go through the road budget, I see that I use them quite a bit. Really helpful.
There are questions that I have with the ARPA stuff, so we'll get to that.
That, a lot of that'll be covered in the packet that I gave you. Uh, in fact, I should give you another question.
I've, we've got one, I know.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we got...
Dig into it, we, our... You'll be able to answer, not today possibly, but dig into it and get the other deals.
So, we gotta follow the agenda, time-wise?
Well, what were you thinking?
Say somebody wants to come in, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jean.
No, I was asking, what were you thinking?
I was just thinking we'd probably just take a recess until eleven, because we've covered all of our other business.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take a recess till eleven o'clock.
Oh, Marv?
Yes, sir? Sir?
Uh, this, this would be two, the twenty-twenty...
Guess I never saw that one. I'll have to ask him that, where it comes in. Somebody, something changed. Well, let's just see, what, what did they spend last year? Twenty-twenty-one actual is this. So, they probably just lowered this. See, they had budgeted for this amount. They've never spent it, so they lowered after that. There's some holes in this here, uh, and when we get to the road department, you're gonna see shit like this. It has all this stuff in it. We're gonna go through these, the ones that are colored here, the stuff that wasn't answered, and Charlie and I were working on that until quitting time last night, and then again this morning. So, some of this stuff has to do with project costs. That's what most of this stuff is, and that we don't, it's hard to see which project, we can't pick it to board this, so let's go through it, kind of, let's hold off through that. Another thing, when Ken put his stuff on, he didn't put any salaries in it, yes. I mean, he didn't calculate that. No, he didn't do the calculations. So what I did on this sheet here, this here, the, this red part, that's all twenty-twenty-two values. Nope, no, it didn't have that. This is just twenty-two. This does, this does not include, oh, seventy-five cents, no, not, they're just twenty-two.
Uh, 'cause I have to send the letter to the attorney general's...
I suggest that to, to, to the...
Then Kelly should know he did it last year.
And he did make...
Okay.
So he just, uh, could, I was saying, at least you, number. I should have done it. It didn't get that far.
Well, you overwhelmed, you had other things.
Yeah, well, we went out there twice, we met stuff, then we had to go back to Charlie, and Charlie had to go back to Ken, and I had to... I'm going to see Charlie. I said, I gotta, I gotta get these numbers. We worked in, what made, what would be nicer, this is the perfect world, like, the nice, the, the, the stroll, just there's, there's...
Well, how about for a week, guys?
The road improvement part. Because you totally, kind of, together, it screws up your budgets a bit, because one project, one over, or one chip sealed, really. One project, the one over, the one chip sealed really. This is what this year's, this year's, this year's, yeah, all by itself. When we got these numbers together and I took this number and stuck it in. It's kind of what you're seeing.
Yeah.
But you gotta do this first. As of yesterday, these two items worked in here. Consultant fees and then the project fees. Now, when we go through this, we're gonna go say, oh, geez, we can't afford that, there's no way, we can't do that, we gotta make it, and so the board. So we're gonna have to figure these projects for every year. We do, but, yeah. But, yeah, the, that makes it cleaner. And you know what, the deal is, you, you really like to know is what, what does that department cost? Just to depart, what does that cost us? By themselves, and the engineering, of course, road improvement, like you said, in one property. It does. Remember about a month ago or so? I picked it up to the board here, I said, I asked the, the road department and Charlie to go check that bridge on County Seventeen. That's the nation transfer. Oh, I said, you guys need to go down and get that bridge, there's something on the number. And it's, well, Charlie said, I knew, I wonder where that, I'll go drive down there one of these times. They haven't really given back to me on it. But yesterday.
I went across the, isn't it?
Yesterday, the load level has changed to ten thousand pounds.
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand, I didn't, no, I didn't look at that. Got there, they reduced, the pilings and everything are, is really bad. So anyhow, we got an inspection report from the state, Brian Pugh. Says, hey, by the way, that bridge is sorry shape, we're gonna have to start addressing that, it seems. That's a tremendous odd comment, but anyways, that could be, that's unknown, it's not even in our project. But that could be, uh.
Can't be enormous.
Enormous thing, because the Spring Creek has, you know, he was talking about, this is, this is Charlie.
You don't stop a box.
I said, you might need two or three, that Spring Creek has a huge, huge volume. And another thing, we can't impact the flow because the road bridge is right to the side, to west of that. I mean, just under yards. And I think, I forgot, I. Oh, yeah, that, yeah, that's that open span, uh, which, uh, that the railroads got to the ice. And a lot of times, a lot gets sick. You know, the engineer and whatever sets a damn load, the water goes, I mean, it takes the guardrails and everything, the water runs right over the top of that. You, you can see, because the bridge goes way down and then you go back up the other side, so. See, that caused, uh, that's part of what caused Zap to get flooded the, the last time. Was the ice broke up, and it was so fast, and then, uh, Lake Isle dumped this time, because they were too full.
Too full.
We got all that snow and then it started raining, city of Zap got flooded. And it's, cause it blocked, that Spring Creek got blocked by that bridge and by Mylum, I used to have that one over there.
Right.
And it flooded all the way into Zap and up into river.
So it wouldn't go through the railroads.
See, and they had so much issue down by us, and I'll tell that, tender structure fund. And, uh, and Terry said, it's a lot natural span now, he said, you know, can you proceed that, you know. That, that spot's fixed. Yeah, that spot's fixed now. This one, there isn't it, so anyhow, Charlie said, well, maybe we can just fix it, I said, I said, you better double or triple that number. He still having the numbers? He says, I don't, just, just, a repair, I mean, give me a million dollars.
All right, well, you know, I need it.
But I gotta see Todd, Todd Swirz about this one.
We could put tires on that day.
Oh, I hate that when I do that. We don't mind, we like that when you do that. Who knows, you guys are all kind of, some of you guys, who knows are really good, I gotta be, I'll tell you, I want to get a really good set of quiet tires. One of the biggest criterias, the ones I got, I think they're Coopers, the longer you own them, the louder they get. Or are they loud?
Drive the share here, it's getting better.
You turn up the radio, Mark, that's the trick. Good, I don't usually travel with a radio on.
Okay.
I like quiet. Hear that thoncet, those tires.
Really makes a difference if they're all season or all weather or just, you know, so. Depending on what you got on there.
Are they gonna grip in the snow or are they not?
Yeah, what do you, if you want quiet, then you're not gonna do good in the snow. Drying slits.
Highway tires.
Oh, I got two minutes yet? This will save me an email, do you mind if I give you a minute?
Yeah.
I don't need it, railway, just curious, it's curious.
Okay.
And I did see it, I know what the amount is, or I saw what the amount is, but I don't remember what that is.
Oh.
That wasn't on the budget, so I'm just curious.
Okay.
That's all it is.
All right, eleven o'clock, we'll reconvene, the county commission meeting back to order. Uh, next on the agenda, we have, uh, Mr. Darwin Knutson.
Mercer County Commissioners. Thank you. Mercer County Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, when I was in here in May, I visited a few of you folks. Sitting out, having coffee, watching the sun rise, as I usually do in the morning, realized I didn't know who you folks were. All except Mr. Enzy here, of course, he's like, he's got like a familiar piece of furniture around here. So, uh, I want to first start off by thanking you all for the work you all do. I went through and did an extensive research on previous meetings, because I hadn't been following them at all, and. I've just been going by what my bride Wanda has been telling me, and, well, she thinks the best of everybody. So I want to thank you all for your work and the, the subcommittees too, it's just been fantastic to see you all working together. And that's what we want to continue to see. We look up to you folks. And when we see politics come up here, it sort of sets me off, because I have a thirty-five-year perspective of things up here. And I see things a little different than you probably, you folks probably do. Many of you haven't been here all that long. But I did come upon some theater there and a couple of meetings, and it seems to, uh, surround this twenty twenty-one audit. And I guess the question I have for the commissioners here is the highlighted bullet points, number nine, for starters, is if. The material findings on that audit have been taken care of or are in the process of being taken care of, that we can have confidence. That our darn books are straightened out. Because I did look at, uh, look at the material findings on that audit, and someone who has an extensive background in project management. It was an eye-opener, it really was. And, uh, so I just want to make sure that, uh, you folks can assure me that those problems have been resolved. For starters. And, uh, there's no reason why not. Uh, a lot of those kind of bullet points you have in front of you there are from my historical perspective. And, uh, they are my personal views, my personal opinions, and I'm an upfront type of guy. Now, the other thing is, uh. I'd like to request a vote from this commission, if you haven't already. To inform, uh, State's Attorney of the misappropriated funds. And request the State's Attorney to take actions necessary to recover the funds in question. Have you folks done that? I haven't seen anything in the minutes. Ignoring the situation ain't gonna work, and I worked hard for my money, so did all the rest of the people in Stanton. Big City, Zap, the rural communities, and for two entities of Hazen and Beulah to get some funding that was not rightfully theirs. And have the impression that they get to keep it doesn't sit well with me. It is not just the sole responsibility of this county and the people in our county. Which does not reflect on these good people in our auditor's office here, they've been nothing but helpful and engaging. So with that, folks, I'd just like to hear from this commission, what your steps will be and how you're gonna address my request. We look up to you folks, and we rely on you folks to take care of our business, you're our financial advisors. And, uh. This is a serious matter.
I'm not trying to ignore you at all, just trying to read through your paperwork, I just want you to know that, but I'm just trying to go through it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, it's very lengthy, I, I just sat down yesterday and I, I took that right off the top of my head. Like I said, I've been here thirty-five years. That stuff is very familiar, I've. And I know most of you don't have any perspective on the history up here. From going all the way back to twenty thirteen. And there were some pretty drastic situations up here in my mind that were not handled properly.
Darwin, there's so much information here that I would have to do some research, I would have to do some research on and visit with you and get some background on it. I can't even answer some of them.
I don't expect you to, that's more of a historical perspective I wanted to put on the record. That's more, a lot of my opinions, some of them are assumptions, but a lot of them are backed up with material findings in our, in our records, archives here.
Uh, I do want to address item number nine on the very first page, material findings.
Yep.
That has not been taken care of. Number one, the number one main material finding from our audit, and I'll read it. Corrective action plan for the first material finding was Mercer County will update their software. So all reports generated will agree with one another. To create further transparency and eliminate the need for supplemental spreadsheets to reconcile at month and year end. Anticipated completion date, from the Mercer, this here was from Shannon, our, our former auditor, I should say, to the state. Says Mercer, uh, Mercer County Auditor, Treasurer and Tax Director will work together to find a software program that meets all department needs. During fiscal year twenty twenty-two. We are hopeful to implement this as soon as possible, would like to have it up and running no later than January of twenty twenty-three. No action has been taken on that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to let you know that you asked the question whether we are.
Yeah.
Responding to the material, that particular one, we have not.
Yeah, and I understand with the turnover and everything with auditor Samantha here and everything, it's.
And I'd like to just fill you into a little bit on what's going on too, so, yeah. I have been appointed just recently, and then also in the treasurer's office, there's gonna be some changes in the near future. So it was our impression, since there was a few new people coming into those big roles, that we would go together now and see what we, our options are. Currently, we do have our IT guy here, actually yesterday and today, who was updating our software that we are using currently.
That sounds great, it really does, that's good to hear.
Darwin, I guess I want to emphasize that, from my perspective. We have been a little bit remiss in not fulfilling that, we haven't even put money in the budget for it.
Yeah.
And. In order to have this implemented no later than January of twenty twenty-three, we would have had to start right away in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
We did not.
It was discussed that part of the ARC of funds is supposed to go to new software.
It was, I made motions to that effect, and some of them didn't even get a second.
Yeah. Well, I'd even like to see all our, our accounting put online, so we can all go online and, and review it and follow it. Uh, you know, even these meetings here, you know, they're, uh, meetings of record, and, uh, there's folks like me and others that, uh, you know, we. We sit at home in our leisure and we watch, watch what you folks are doing, and I even talked to the road, um. Maintenance manager there, uh, after I was in last time here, and, uh, he even mentioned that he uses recordings to keep up on, you know, the process up here. And a lot of people can't make it here, so I, I just encourage you, yeah, to look at the possibilities there, uh, so we can follow it online. And, uh, keep our, keep abreast of what's going on. We've got some very smart people in this community, and just as, as deputy auditor here. And, uh, auditor Samantha came up with this, uh, telephone change, it'll save money, you know, that's, we've got a different perspective on things, and. When it comes to spending our money up here, yeah, we're always looking to cut, 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 but we also understand that business has to be done. So, uh, you know, and the other, the other point is, uh, you know, uh, recollecting these funds, you know. Uh, that were misappropriated. You know, that's, that's a step that has to be taken. Uh, there has to be some action to, uh. To persuade or encourage the folks in Hazen and Beulah to bring this money back to us, this is all of ours money. And I'd like to see it back. I worked hard for it.
I was not aware that there was, um, a misappropriation of funds, we have never been informed that there was a misappropriation of funds, so. I'd like to know, um, when and where these, what accounts these were.
Well, my understanding is, there is, uh, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that were not to be dispersed to the city of Hazen and Beulah. For a period of five years, I guess it was. And, uh, they should have been kept here in accounting. Now, whether it was misappropriation or whatever the technical term is, I'm not a attorney, and. That's why I asked that you have State's Attorney, Schwartz, take a look at this, see what steps have to be encompassed to. Uh, send them a notice to return the monies. I know it's tough, and it's a difficult situation, I understand it very much, but the way it is right now is not right.
Well, that's quite a allegation to make, uh, misappropriation of funds, but, uh, we went through, uh. Quite an extensive audit, and, uh, our auditing firm never informed us that there was a misappropriation of funds.
Well, I don't know what term to use, uh.
I can explain two of those for you. Misappropriation is possibly a wrong word, probably a misallocation.
Okay, allocation, there you go.
Received the money, we allocated it to the wrong departments. Two, one of those with electrical generation and transmission tax, and, uh. There was an error in our, the way we were allocating that money, and our county should have received roughly twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand a year. For roughly six years or whatever it was, so that, that's part of that fund.
Mm-hmm.
But that got corrected in twenty twenty.
Okay.
I'm not sure why it wasn't mentioned in the audit, because it was still there in twenty twenty-nine, but we already had become aware of it and got that corrected.
Okay.
And we did not go back and try to recoup that. The other one was, uh. Some county road funds were misallocated, that we were giving a percentage of money to the cities. That, uh, came in from our county road tax.
Yes.
And, uh, that, we actually went down to Bismarck and saw the treasurer's office and got that corrected again, I think that was in twenty twenty also. Initiated that and servilest went down there and that misallocation got corrected.
Yes.
And we're not doing that anymore. I think the last time we did it was January of twenty twenty-two, and we got it corrected.
Okay, the correction, that's great, that's great, but it's to bring that money back, because it did not belong to these other entities, Hazen. Did not belong to Beulah, it belonged to all of us, and, uh, I would like to see actions taken. To request Mr. Schwartz to look into that and recover that. Do you request Mr. Schwartz to look into that and recover them's funds? We are in a bad way here in this country. We're a bad way in this county. We're all sitting pretty good. Most of us, many of us have worked our butts off. We're sitting with a good retirement, and we can get by. But I tell you what, folks, the people out here in this community that have three, four, five, six people in their house, they're hurt. They're hurt, and this is our money, and it's for all of us, and I'd like to see it brought back. So I'll leave that to you folks. I...
In regard to, I'm gonna go back to that first audit finding. I anticipate myself that we'll probably take action on that in 2023. Also wanna let the public know that that's a very lengthy and expensive process.
Yes.
Needs to be done. To my knowledge, we are the only county of the fifty-three counties in the state that doesn't have tax and financial software that works so we don't have to have supplemental spreadsheets.
Yeah.
So we do need to get that fixed.
Yes.
It was an audit finding. It's very lengthy to do. It could take most of a year. It's quite expensive.
And on that subject, I know from a historical perspective, there was quite a kerfluffle over that very issue here in the previous past. And there was some hard feelings even up here between offices and everything else, and it was just, it was sad to see. But I'm glad to hear it's been on the table, and let's just make the motion or make the moves to get it done. I just wanted to bring it in here and remind you, 'cause I hadn't seen this before, and I wanted not said a darn thing to me either. So I'd like to have our money back.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, now, on the other issue, folks, is the financial outlook here. I tell you what, it's sad. It is really sad. We've got the CBI, which is a Congressional Budget Office Index, and they say the food, fuel and utilities has hit over thirty-eight percent inflation. That's horrendous. And when you look at what that do to this county, it's a really sticky situation. The social security COLA increase is projected at the rate of where we're at now to be twenty-one point one percent. You know, that's twenty cents on the dollar, and that's just a projection. Financials, they've always been a hobby of mine for many, many years. I've studied with some of the best, spent a lot of money with some of the best. And I'll tell you, folks, right now, we're in a recession. We're in a recession, and it's gonna be a short-lived recession, and it's gonna be a depression. All indications, all leading indicators, and I ask you all, you are our financial advisors, to go to look into this and look at the projections. They are not rosy at all. It's very doom and gloom. And I don't wanna be the doom and gloomer here, but that is what is the reality out here in our financial situation. Now, I have two suggestions there because of the strike is. And I was looking at, Juan and I were discussing her retirement. We have, of course, the PERS through the state program, and then we have a separate with Nationwide. And she's retirement age, and because of the policy, she's not able to remove that money unless she is no longer employed by the county. I'd like you folks to take a look at that policy, see if that can't be changed. So when you hit retirement age, you are allowed to remove that funds or even before retirement age after a certain length of time, maybe a percentage or whatever. The people, like I'm saying, people are gonna be hurting. They're hurting now. And when I look at the situation of that, I... We were looking at pulling some of that money out. We were gonna stock some foods and the goods that we use every day because just by the projections of the CBI and COLA and other investment firms I follow, I could easily make a twenty percent year return on that monies by the first part of next year by investing just in food, clothing, you know? Fuel, whatever it is. And so I'd like you folks to step out of the normal lane of things when you're looking at this and see if maybe the other suggestion I have there is that the matching funds in the retirement, and Mercer County has a very, very lavish, not lavish, but very generous retirement matching fund, eleven percent, I believe it is. And I myself, it doesn't matter to me, but there are those who may need that money now. And you may look at setting up special provisions where instead of putting it in into their savings, you can give it to them in some other form or fashion to help out with their thirty-eight percent inflation. It's gonna be a sixty, seventy percent inflation. It's coming. There is no doubt in my mind. There is no doubt in my mind. It is not good, and we can turn over the control of this country with this next election. It's gonna make a bit of difference. You can't turn the switch and turn this stuff around. We've got people sucking the wealth out of us. We've worked hard our entire lives, and now we've got the bankers, the Federal Reserve. We've got all these people from the EU and the UN that have, are sucking the money right out of this country. You see it in the news every day. They're just giving it away. Your congressmen, they don't even know you exist. Your senators don't even know you exist. They get a spreadsheet every morning. They know why, 'cause I'm not afraid to call them a traitor or some issue with their supporting this pedophilia in school or something. I ask them the direct questions. And I tell you what, they get a spreadsheet, okay, how many calls for this, how many calls for that? And that's what they, that's the agenda they go by. That's where they bring their talking points out and get on TV and stuff. So I would encourage you folks to look at setting up a economic and development portfolio for this board. This would be a program, and I have a little experience in how this works, and it does work well, but it would give you folks a voice. You are our financial advisor. You are Mercer County Commissioners. You are a very powerful entity. You're our first defense here, our first defense against these people trying to take our monies and put us up against the wall. And personally, you should have a red telephone sitting on that desk, Mr. Chairman, and you do live calls to Senator Hovin, Senator Kramer, Representative Armsong right here. It'll get them to jump like you wouldn't believe. They're showmen. They're actors. Little theater is good, and you folks have the opportunity here. You can step out of the normal routine of things, and it is often in troubling times ordinary men and women step up and do extraordinary and incredible things. These powerhouses, these industries out here took some incredible people with an incredible vision to set up the mission to make that happen. And we have one of the most rich counties and resources across this country. I've been through thirty of our states and across the lower part of Canada, and we have one of the richest counties when it comes to resources. But we don't have an organized group right here with a portfolio to be calling, hounding, and begging these suckers to get up here and give us some of that money that John Hovin says he has allocated for us for our distressed communities that are being distressed from the Green New Deal. Now, I would just throw that out there, food for thought, but it would be a well worthwhile effort for you folks to sit and make some calls with these people in a uniform manner. And in the century code, you have given that power not only yourselves, but you can join with our sister counties of Oliver, McLean County, and you set up a committee together, and you're a powerful voice in that manner, powerful voice. These folks will sit up and take notice 'cause they don't like to have a bad light shed on their political careers at all. And I just wish you folks would step back, take a look at that for me because we count on you folks. People look up to you folks, and with that, I'll let you go. Thanks for listening to me, and I hope I find this, you found some of this information helpful. And if anything you need to know about something up here in thirty-five years, I can probably tell you about it. So with that, thank you.
Thanks, Darwin.
Thank you, Darwin.
All right. Next on the agenda, we got county-owned property. We got a list of things, social service building. I know we had put that up, trying to sell that before. I don't think we've had any bites on it or anything. Is there any...
And I don't have any update on the social service building as of right now. I haven't spoke to anybody about that one. Really, the only update I have is the auction house. So Chip and his wife are still interested in purchasing that, and they spoke to Boyko, and he's supposed to be writing something up for them.
Okay, is that hap...
We should be seeing that.
Happening soon?
Hopefully.
Well, that depends on how long it takes Boyko to write something up.
I'm just saying, I hear, I hear, I hear, I hear. We need to move on this.
And how would you like me to force them to move forward?
No, we, as a commission, no, no. I'm, okay, to clarify what I'm saying is I've heard a few times there's been people interested, and as a commission, we need to make a decision here. We can't just go in here and say that someone is interested. I mean, we'll be sitting here, what, a year from now, someone's interested. No, we need to either get someone that's interested here and make an offer, or we need to proceed with getting, actually demolishing the building.
Yeah, so what they stated was they're in the process of having the paperwork written up.
Okay.
Just to mention to you guys.
Well...
When was the last time we sent them a letter? Tell them we need to have, we need to...
I was just on the phone with her on Monday.
Okay.
Okay, let's put that on, I guess, next month's agenda again, and... 'Cause we need to get moving on this. That, anyway, that's my, I would like to see it.
Yeah, no, and I agree with that. Basically, we put it on the agenda just so that it came to the forefront, and we take action sooner than later.
And that interested party, as Marvin said, let's tell them we're gonna be doing something rather quickly here.
And I wanna go back to social service building. We kinda brushed over that, jumped into the next one. I would like our board to, does anybody have any thoughts on what we can do to get that off of our county's coffers? Anybody have any idea? Or are we just...
It's either pay taxes and utilities on it.
It's either that or utilize the building. I mean, the worst thing you can do, it's just like you have a vehicle that sets for a year or two. The building is a live structure, basically, and the sewer system and all that. Probably got some issues over there that it doesn't get used, visiting with Jim. So one way or the other, it's not good to have that thing set in there being not utilized. So the pendulum has to go, you know, one way. I mean, we haven't got a buyer, but maybe we have to utilize it just to keep the life in that building because it'll just, like you said, with the sewer system and those types of things, it, Jim said it should be used because it needs to be flushed, you know?
We have no person or entity interested in the building?
Have we even advertised though renting it out as opposed to selling it? I, that would mean I'm not.
No.
So that might be an option.
The other question is, this might sound foolish, but is a public auction a possibility? Let's just say that we sell it for a dollar. I'm just using a number. And the city of Stanton can use it. They have a need for a building like that, but they can't afford it. So is a public auction an avenue to get some exposure on it? I'm not very familiar with them. I'm just asking the question.
I mean, that could be added to our normal fall tax and whatever type sales we have. The other thought, possibly, you know, do an RFP for some type of real estate, a realtor. But, I mean, I guess, one way or another, it's either gotta be used or not in our hands.
No, I, as you said, Marvin, yeah, we need to, even if we sell it, we need to move on it.
What are you guys' thoughts? Let's just say we need to, what can we do today to try to get this off of dead center?
I would say advertise now that we have the building for sale, and we're willing to look at any bids that we would get.
Any or all offers?
Yes.
I think it would be best to get it out of our hands.
I do too. So let's start with that.
And we have to pay fuel bills.
Take the rent option off the table.
Let's just try and sell it.
Yeah, rent would be, you know, what could we get for rent?
We're not supposed to...
Well, 'cause then we don't...
We're not supposed to be in the business.
Yeah.
Right, we're not supposed to want to compete.
Well, it's the difference of being in the business or having a building that's set in there costing us. So sometimes we're caught in both directions, but at the time, it isn't... And I, it's a little bittersweet. I hate to, I may not hate to, but we'd sell the building, and I sure would hate to find out that there was usage for it in Mercer County because we had other options years ago to buy a lot. We didn't buy that lot, while then it ends up that we did expand and it...
The only thing that I can see that we can use it for possibly is we are paying rent to Ritterath for some...
Yep, for the superintendent of the school, right?
And we can utilize this building, but then if we sell it, then we'd have to just deal with...
Move that again, yeah.
Cabinets back and forth, so...
But you're on, I mean, you're on the right track. We'd probably try again to sell this structure and hopefully, you know, get a, you know, get a buyer and a prospective individual that's interested. Put an ad out there, willing to entertain any and all offers. That's all right.
Wayne, you know the, how that'll turn out. We'll sell the building, and two months later, something will come up, but we can't see, we can't see the future. We can't predict. I don't have a golden wand either.
Well, we've been sitting on it empty for over a year, I think, at least.
Right.
So, I mean, if there was somebody or some use, I think we would've found it by now.
Yep, for ourselves.
For ourselves, correct.
Yes. Then maybe somebody else has a good idea. Just an odd question, but we're looking at a system to nine-one-one. Where are they gonna stick all these people? I mean, she's only got that much room in that place down there, too.
Well, we need our county people to, I hate to use the word employees, but to look at that as an option, but to stick one individual over there...
Right, that wouldn't make sense.
...at the cost alone.
But...
I understand being stuck in a closet, it sure'd be nicer to be, have a little more elbow room, but you got a big building there. But yeah, if some county departments can come to us with a...
Practical lead.
With an idea, yeah, practical idea, we can, we'll definitely listen to it.
Yep.
So there you are.
There you go.
County departments. Come to us rather quickly 'cause we'd like to do something with that building.
So maybe put a memo out to all the department heads to just stating, we just wanna make sure that we have all our bases covered and that there's no need, or if you can think of anything that you would need this building for.
T L eight special is coming pretty quick. Go down to the grocery store lot, then?
Yep.
Yep. I'm not sure what the discussion is there.
Grocery store lot? I think it was something to do with it being a reclamation on it, like grass seeding or something is the last I heard. I don't know.
I guess I asked that question, do we have any requirements for reclamation? Like, do we need to seed grass? That was just an idea. If we haven't heard anything, do we turn it over to the, or entertain turning that lot over to the city of Stanton in our fall deal, or how do we do that? We own that lot right now, right?
A lot, yep, and then we have the fees that we're required to do demolition and reclamation of it. So it could definitely be on the sale. I don't know if we'd want some type of reserve to recoup some of those costs. But, I mean, we're not in the business of owning property.
Right.
Right.
And can we do that? Can we add that to our...
Advertise?
Yeah.
Items that we sell every fall?
Yeah, we can always add properties to that regardless if they're coming back for taxes or if they're property that we've...
That changed a couple of years ago, that you can actually do it any time of the...
That changed a couple of years ago, that you can actually do it any time of the year now, before it used to be just in October.
Yeah.
Are we able to, let's say, ju- just, I, I don't think we can, but if an individual came up to us and made us an offer, we have to, uh, actually offer it? Advertise it, in other words, we can't just take-
If we had, if we had it advertised for sale, if somebody came up and gave us an offer, entertain that offer.
Yeah, as long as we have it, said that we are willing to accept offers on the property, then we could accept it at any time.
The other thing along with that, just putting a simple little sign on it that says, "This property for sale, contact county auditor." That just might be all we need.
But if we're gonna put the social service building up anyway, why not just include this lot too?
A physical sign, sometimes, people drive by, they don't look at the paper too, but just all of a sudden keep driving by that sign and all of a sudden they might, I'm just asking.
I'd have no opposition to having a sign up.
Yeah, I would say do both.
That's probably a good, very good idea.
And that, that would be public notice?
Yep.
Yes.
So, okay.
Okay.
So who's gonna do that, Jim? Does that fall under Jim's, uh, blanket?
I, I work with Jim, he's on vacation.
Uh, yeah, he's on vacation right now, so, uh, but, yeah, I, I'm sure, I mean, it's a simple process, just-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the grocery lot? Um, I had them put the right-of-way plats on here, this is for, this is, uh, it's in section nineteen, government lot four, it's part of one of our road projects. It's, uh, essentially the right-of-way plat, uh, for county right-of-way, I just wanted it presented in front of the board and if we approve that, then we can get that recorded and it's, it's for one of our ongoing road projects.
What is it?
It's, uh, it's additional right-of-way required, um, for the fixing of one of the bridges that we did. Does it have project number, is that there? It's Interstate's project number.
Looking for it, twenty-two oh thirty?
Yeah, that was their internal, I wonder if we got it.
This is a right-of-way for a road, bridge project that was done?
That we're in the current process of, yeah.
Which bridge?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Looks like there's a curve there, it almost looks like that, it's going down south here.
The one that we were thinking was gonna be a certain-
Yeah, down nearby Wiles.
Oh.
Gives section and numbers, but it doesn't tell you, where is that section?
One forty-four eighty-five, so this would be the one south of the crossroads.
There's Charlie.
There's Charlie.
There's Charlie. Hey Charlie, we're talking about that right-of-way plat, um, that Matt did, do you know which bridge that's for? It's, uh, Township one forty-four, Range eighty-five.
What bridge is it, what bridge it's for?
Yeah, what bridge it's for, I think it's, um,
I'm guessing it's the twenty-nine one thirty-four twenty, south of the crossroads.
Yeah, cause, uh, Range eighty-five would be approximately east and maybe a little bit east.
Yeah, that'd be the one.
That'd be the one, okay.
Then why do we need purchases right-of-way?
It's- Structure size, so for the structure, um, that's going to go in to replace it, requires, um, permanent right-of-way that is beyond the existing right-of-way in order for, for the footprint of it.
Okay.
Yep. And that's what's helpful, I guess, with that, um, right-of-way agreement, I guess, that we kind of came up with recently, that we recently passed, that'll all be in that process. You know, at least it's an offer, a monetary offer that we can offer up.
So, so I'm a corner right-of-way?
Uh, I'd have to look at the-
Does it say in that patch part, so there's an acreage?
Oh, oh, here we go.
Acres temporary, since it's temporary, that's what we, permanent would be this, right?
Yes, yep, so point three on the north side and, so about, a little over half an acre total, permanent, point five, four acres. Which would be, I think we offered up monetary value of fifteen hundred and eighty, wasn't it, on the agreement we put together, so? And then the temporary can be no less than three hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Minimal.
Per acre, right?
Per owner.
Per owner.
Per acre, per owner, yep. Correct.
Yeah, so basically, I just put it on the agenda so that we could approve it and then we'd get it recorded and then that we would have that permanent right-of-way for that bridge.
Well, we have to-
The reason is because the structure is bigger, that has to be put in place.
Correct.
Correct?
I mean,
Correct.
To, to mention any, uh, constructive criticism, if we don't okay it, then the bridge can't be built.
Pretty well.
Correct?
Pretty much.
Pretty well, right?
That would be, that's an accurate, effective statement, Dean.
Okay.
Very good.
I make a motion, we move ahead with, uh, right-of-way.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. And we'll have, um, recorder's office record it.
Right.
Good. Um, I don't think we have anything more on county properties, so we can go into the department budget review. Just go in order?
Well, Charlie has it.
Oh, Charlie?
Just real quick on that, so the act, the act of recording that would have to occur after the right-of-way is secured from the owner, agreements are made from the owner.
Okay.
So until that happens,
Okay.
which we would trigger, Interstate will let you know when that, when that's buttoned up and-
Well, then I'll give you these back.
Okay.
So you're dealing with one property or two property owners?
Two.
Okay.
And I believe one individual lives in Washington State. I'd have to check with her.
You, you don't need to fly out there.
No.
Doesn't have to be in person, Charlie.
Yeah, just make it clear, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, department budget review.
Landfill.
Landfill?
Candy, you're first.
Candy, you're up, up in center. That's all right, come up to the mic and smile at us.
Well, do you have any questions on what I put on here, I guess?
Hold on, I gotta find you, Candy.
We're all digging.
Besides you standing there, I gotta find you on paper.
Has anything changed greatly? Has anything changed greatly in what you requested, Candy?
Um, no, well, the fuel changed some. And, um, I guess the only thing is there was an attached sheet down there for a possible capping project for part of the MSW cell. Because we might need to do part of that to be in compliance with our permit. And I don't know how.
And Sherwin gave you that?
Anybody find it?
I didn't find it.
No, you're still digging.
It's towards the bottom.
I went to the, I went to the bottom already, so I'm working forward. Oh, it's about the fifth one from the back.
County landfill, and then she's got, uh, documented.
Or the fourth one.
I didn't see that one.
There, I found it.
Find her?
Yep, got her.
It's way deep in the pile.
See if there's an attachment. Got it.
Sherwin wrote up, um, that-
This page?
That's kind of an estimate on-
The capping?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is just for cell one, or is it for?
Uh, no, this would be going into cell four and five probably, it may be. Sherwin made this mound here, here, um, here capped up to this end and that bit probably goes like from here to maybe somewhere in here that this piece would get capped, cause this is not finished yet.
Okay, and then six and seven are back, or the newer ones that we got?
The newer ones are way back.
They're over there, they're cut?
Yeah. And this was, this is just enough, we had to fill in this here, this is the top here. That's, this is the north side and this is the top of the landfill.
Gotcha.
And then these are areas we had to fill in to get a garbage grade for the capping.
Okay.
And that's a rough estimate to cap, like part of this area, so that our acreage is down for whatever it is.
For your permit, okay.
Cause we have too much stuff open up that we need to help.
Um.
Something Brad kind of brought up that. And so maybe, I don't know, we'll have to discuss this, I guess, later, but to have it for in twenty-twenty-three in the budget somewhere there.
You're gonna have to try to cap, you'll, or cap that part down to, uh, get back into compliance with-
For the permit.
For the permit, yeah.
Cause it'll be after.
Open.
Open.
Yep.
Gotcha.
And it won't be the entire, you know, two cells.
Okay.
This would be like four and five cell here.
Okay.
This is kind of the normal ongoing process of a landfill.
Yeah, you just-
It is.
You dig a hole and then you cap, and then you dig a hole.
Right, and that's why you were setting some monies aside before, right?
Yeah, well, just started that, checking it down and then to dig the hole.
Right, and we just figured, yeah.
And then there was some, I guess, discussion with the money that we borrowed from what it's at fund prior to when Shannon was here, that maybe part of that money could come to help cap part of this also.
Which fund?
The ARPA?
ARPA, yeah. It was, it was brought up, but it wasn't like approved or anything.
Okay.
So that's just another thing, or hopefully, we'll have enough set aside because we have to help with putting in the new liners that will have the money, but I'd have to be able to do this with the number guard.
We do have some ARPA funds left over after the allocation to the landfill and the, um, building improvement here. And like I said, I, there was previous discussion about using the first, uh, software update, but it looks like there could be possible potential of ending on this that cost, you know, if they're having some extra. But that would have to be after, we think, you know, decide on what we're gonna be updating the software.
Right.
So-
Then if that's what you guys wanted to do, you know.
Right.
So, uh, well, today, uh, uh, to cap that, uh, then, uh, Candy, is, is that what he's looking at, at a hundred forty-two thousand? And then he's got the, uh-
Yeah, one's the-
Yeah, that's for the MSW part.
Municipal solid waste is the MSW and then the other portion is the inert.
Yeah, that inert part, that I don't know if I can get any of that up to the grade that needs to be
Okay.
For this, but that part is not a compliance.
Gotcha, it's just the MSW one.
That's a different, different figuration, or, okay.
Okay.
Calculations.
It would just be nice to close up part of that, cause the state likes to see that, but
So-
I'm not sure, you know, and it wouldn't be as big of an area as this either, it'd be just part of the west end.
So we're looking at pretty well, trying to secure about a hundred forty-two thousand to cut, to cap that whole portion then.
That stuff that Zach raised.
That we need to have for the permit.
For the permit, yeah.
Is this gonna be for next year or this year yet?
That'd be next year.
No, it'd be next year, yeah, it's not quite ready yet.
Okay.
We still got some filling in to do or whatever, but-
So you'd be looking at a hundred and forty-two thousand in the budget, in your budget for next year for capping this?
For capping.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure, did this, did this include like their costs for Sherwin and everything too on here?
And I'm not sure if I, I would be-
To do the, you know, to do the plant or whatever.
That's at thirty-six.
I would be thinking that he's gonna put that out on bids to see what contractors, a- again, just like any other thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to do that, but this is just like a rough estimate he gave for what, like how much dirt they're gonna have to move and all of that stuff.
Yep, how many yards and, sure.
Yeah, he's got in there-
So it's just a rough, it's not a set and stone anything.
He's got testing, construction management, engineering administration, legal notices are in his budget, about thirty-six thousand.
Okay, yeah.
And that's why he said to do a ten percent adder for fuel adjustment, so he estimated forty thousand an acre, he's got it on a per acre basis. So if we got three and a half acres, then he'd have about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars in. That's where he came up with a hundred and forty-two, yeah. So that includes the engineering and the testing.
Okay.
Okay.
And I mean, this, this is preliminary stuff, so
Yeah, right.
This, we put in preliminary, so we know what we're budgeting for and then if we get any updates or any differences, then we can make that for that to final.
True.
Okay.
And then the only other thing, I guess, that would be different on here was, uh, um, and I don't even think I raised it that much, is there's a chance in the future, we need to put a different furnace thing in our heated shop. Quit on us a few times and we took it apart and cleaned it and it's working better now, but-
Is that, uh, electric or propane?
Propane.
Propane, okay.
What model is the furnace thing?
Oh, my.
Original.
I don't have it written down, I've been trying to get estimates from people and that to maybe.
It's a little bit old.
Yeah, it's been there, it was there way before me, never been replaced.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think it's pretty original.
You aren't that, as old as me, so it's-
I'm not very far behind you, just slow down, I'll pass, yeah.
Okay, you can get, get it, you can get us a more, um, precise projected budget then? Or is this it?
Well, this is basically what I put on there and, um, like, if I don't need it, I mean, I don't plan on spending every nickel.
But this is additional, this is gonna be additional for next year, this hundred and forty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
For that capping.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. So those are-
From what's not on-
Right, those are one-time expenses and then she's got numbers for the normal, regular budget stuff.
Right.
You keep, you keep saying next year, so I'm assuming you're twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three, yes.
But what I'm also alluding to is what is the proposed budget amount for next year for the county landfill? We have what has been spent to, to date, we have what, uh, was budgeted
Well, she also doesn't have the salaries in there because we have decided on a firm cost of living increase in order to do that or not.
Yeah, the, that, the social security, the insurance, all of that, I don't know what any of that's gonna be, it changes.
Right.
Workman's comp.
On that, on that question, I have a question for everybody, cause it came up two other places. When we did the road department, they didn't put any salaries and stuff in there either. But when I, because I wanna get an answer to Gene's question for myself and for to present to you guys, I put in twenty-twenty-two's wages. Now, some departments are using si- twenty-twenty-two wages plus seventy-five cents an hour, well, how does the board wanna see it? When you put in the wages here, so we know what the budget cost is gonna be, do you want at the present salary? Or do you want a proposed salary of seventy-five cents an hour increase?
My, my thought would be the highest that we have in the preliminary, that way we know worst-case scenario what salaries and whatever.
So I would say the proposed.
The proposed highest point, um, that we're talking about.
Right.
That would be my recommendation.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yes, I agree.
And how do I exactly figure that out? Add seventy-five cents?
I think that's the auditor's job, isn't it?
I'd say Sam had given out-
Yeah, your auditor.
And I just didn't wanna do it if it gets changed, it just, it's, I see what you guys mean, because you're gonna need it on the, that for the tax dollars or whatever, but being, I'm not, we're gonna, we'll end up going with whatever you guys say, so it's kinda
Right, well-
It's not coming out of taxes to report to people.
Correct, yours isn't coming out of taxes, but we need to see it so that we need to, so we know if we need to do a, a per ton adjustment. Because that's how your budget works, but we also need to see how all those salaries work in other departments
Yeah.
that are tax-related.
So there's not gonna be, there, like I said, there's not gonna be the, that information on these ones today, but-
No.
Which is, which is fine.
Right, early next week or the middle of the next week is when I ha- want the preliminary, or when I will have the preliminary budget prepared, also I'm waiting for, um, the centrally assessed, so our utilities, we still haven't received those, which we were supposed to receive them by the end of June, but I did get an email saying that we were gonna have that by the end of this week, so that's why also, we don't have anything showing our mills. So that's why also we don't have anything showing our mills or our revenue side of the budget. So that's why I haven't.
Right.
All that stuff will put be put together for next week and that'll be emailed out to you guys, but yeah, I didn't add any of the salaries that. If they didn't submit them, I didn't add that part yet.
Okay.
Yep.
And question, question for Samantha, what she maybe have, did did they uh tell you anything on the uh the health insurance part? They usually kinda dragged your feet and we kinda gotta guess our way into that one too.
For like our Sanford? Yeah, there's gonna be an increase or. So Blue Cross and uh Blue Shield, I met with him and Ryan, there's no increase to our dental um or vision. And Sanford is our, is every two years is when we renew our contract and that'll be next year.
Okay, okay.
So we're stuck in ours for Sanford, this uh for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
And then uh Blue Cross, there was no no change.
Well, that that's very good, because it's always. Some unknowns that can happen in that and it's real hard to budget that way then, but thanks for that information.
So essentially, we could use this year's numbers for projections next year if they're.
Correct.
Um stating no increases other than the ones that used to.
Yeah, we can run a report though to see where we're at on those, which we'll have to in order to, you know, answer that information in the budget, so.
Okay, okay. Candy, any other things you wanna bring attention to?
I don't think so, unless you guys got something.
On under first glance, I I don't have any.
No.
No.
No, it's.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Candy.
Happy day.
You too.
Next, we got road department.
After all that, are you still willing to come up here?
He's sheet number two.
Yeah.
Right up on top. Chairman and board members, uh I wanted to update you just a little bit. I met with Ken twice and Charlie and I were going almost to quitting time yesterday trying to evaluate. What our project costs might be for twenty twenty-three and our remaining for twenty twenty-two. And then what funds might be available to help us with those project costs. And I completed that late last night and again this morning, so Ken and Charlie don't have, I gave them a copy of what I prepared. Or condensed, and so I'll be able to walk through quite a bit of that. And I have a, that's the handout that I gave you, I gave you guys a handout that looks like this, I'll be able to walk you through that pretty good. Now, if it's alright with you, Ken, and I would like to just proceed with walking through it. And see where we're at, is that okay with you?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, uh first thing is uh. You go to page two, go on to three, this page here, looks like this. Okay, let's look at that one first. Uh on item six fifty-two in the page. I recommend four hundred and thirty thousand dollars every year to be budgeted. Now, if you go to the very back page that I gave you here. That will define how we arrived at that number. That shows us all the road graders that we have and when we need to purchase them and the approximate cost. And if you take that cost of those road graders and divide it out on a. Five-year scale of replacing it, it ends up being about, if you look on the, there's a small box in the right-hand corner. If we budget three hundred and thirty-six, eight, sixteen every year for road graders, well, when the time comes to replace it, we should have the money there to do it. And then uh you also in a small little box, I have forty thousand dollars for pickups, we have ten pickups. Now, this can be changed, but this is what I came up with and and discussing it with Ken too. If we have ten pickups, we we budget forty thousand dollars a year, when it comes time to replace the pickup, we'll have the money. Same thing with loaders, loaders we have two. And because of the cost of those, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand, well, I don't even know what it is, we we just took a swag at that, it's pretty high. So if you add all those numbers together, if we budget four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, or I wrote down four hundred and thirty thousand on that line item. When the time comes to replace these graders and our equipment, we should have the funds there to do it. So I'm just defining, and we don't need to decide that right now, let me walk through all of it. I'm trying to describe how I arrived at that four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So now you guys, you'll see that.
And this year we budgeted four hundred and forty-one in that line item?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep. So if you can go up, as if you want to, I'm not saying that you said that, but I'm just saying that it looks like four hundred and thirty would work. So that we don't go any more than we need to. Okay, now I'm gonna walk into the this sheets that I have here a little bit. Uh the very front sheet that you have. There's a number one on the end of the balance sheet for twenty twenty-two. That tells us that the end of twenty twenty-two, this is the amount of funds that we have available. And it ends up being, if you add all those together, it's five hundred and forty thousand, I think it is, you see a number of five twenty-six. At the bottom of the page, you're going to see that we are, to finish our projects for twenty twenty-two. We're gonna be roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars short. It was fi- we have five hundred and sixty-four thousand minus thirty-seven, that comes out to five hundred and twenty-six thousand, three forty-seven. And that's the, on number one, if you take that all the way across, you're gonna see that five twenty-six. Based on the information we have now, that's how much money we should have in all of our funds at the end of twenty twenty-two. Okay? The next thing is um. The revenue for twenty twenty-three, that'll be on the second sheet, it looks like this sheet here. Now, this is making huge assumptions here. Because this is how much monies are available in ARPA and COVID and uh. Our board may decide that this money could be prioritized in another department rather than just for roads. So anyhow, Samantha left, okay, she had some questions about ARPA and I said I would cover the ARPA and COVID costs later, and this is where it's at. This is when we receive the monies. Now, the very first line of eighty-one thousand, two seventy-two, that we don't have. That we have to apply for, and that's through the state, and there's some rules that we have to follow in order to get that money and get it approved, so. And talking to Brian Fuchsing, his name is, when we do our road projects, first thing we should do is use that money. Reduce the overall cost, and then whatever's left, we use our eighty-twenty split and apply for that money. Okay? From the information I have, now this is a little bit dated. Our state aid that we get, we get two hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually, and it says present, we have five hundred and seventy-six. I think that's closer to six hundred or a little bit better, because that five seventy-six was at the beginning of the year. So I'm assuming that we probably got some more money prorated into that, but I'm just staying with the five hundred and seventy-six thousand. So this is possible revenue that's available, and when we get to our twenty-three projects, you'll see what we might be able to do with it. We have uh. ARPA federal distribution, we we just received a second payment of that, so you take those two together. And uh it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand, I'd have to add those two numbers in my head. But we've allocated, to my knowledge, of that ARPA federal money, we've allocated. Two hundred and fifty-one, three seventy-four towards the landfill, and we've allocated the other one million towards building improvement. So of that red area, all we have is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand left that we may or may not use for roads. And then we have host bill fifteen oh five, this is what I refer to as our state ARPA money, cause it comes from, came from the feds through the state to us. This has even more strings attached to it than the other ARPA. And this is one that uh Nodaco recommended that, well, both of these, that we create a special fund, so we track these expenses. Cause we're gonna get audited on them, but anyhow, we have fourteen, one point four million dollars, that money has been transferred into. Fund twenty-one, twenty-seven township roads, so we already have that money in there too. So if you add all those sums together, uh if my math is correct, it should be fairly relative, we have two and a half million dollars. So that's a possible revenue that we can use for road projects. Alright? Now I'm gonna go see if I can keep track of this stuff myself, so you go back to the. Our proposed budget that we have here, and I'm gonna go to this sheet here, it's with the yellow deals. There's two two parts to this, the top part is our engineering costs, the bottom box is our construction costs. And on the top box underneath the engineering costs, you'll see that I applied that eighty-one, two seventy-two that. That uh is called C R R A A, C R R S A A, that uh COVID relief. That we have to apply for from the state, that they said we use that first, or we can use that first, it's COVID money for the roads. So I applied that there to reduce the cost, so if we do that, the cost for engineering is about five hundred and eighty-three, seven twenty-eight. So then you go back to this budget sheet that we got here, the very first one, that shows five hundred and eighty-four thousand put in there. That's where that's where you get that number, that's line item two, three, one, five consultant fees. That's how we arrived at that number. Now, if you go to twenty twenty-three, these are the contractor costs. And the estimated is called the budget, that's our estimated cost for those projects, comes out to four point two million dollars. Uh we haven't done those projects yet, so it's still at four point two. Now, on the very first one, the Mercer County Bridge, twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty. It's possible we're gonna get five hundred and seventy-six thousand from the state. Now, that is not a guarantee, but it is most likely. But we need to confirm that, and I talked to Charles yesterday and he's going to double-check that, there was some concern about our application process. And we're following up on it, okay? So if we get the state aid there, that cost from eight hundred and fifty could be reduced to two seventy-four. The other one is the Mercer twenty-seven overlay, I believe that's from Hazen up to eighteen oh six, going to Hazen Bay, right, Charles? Okay, if we take the. Money that's been transferred into. If we take this money here. The money that's on the front page, if we take the three twenty-eight, nine thirty, that's just remaining in ARPA. And the money that's already been put into the township road and bridge, it comes out to seventeen eighty-one. If we take that ARPA money, it would all be used up and apply it towards that, our cost would be nine hundred and eighteen. So that gives gets us down to what our cost would be for. Payments to contractors, so I took that one eighty-two and I plugged that into this budget sheet that I gave you here. So that, I'm trying to get you to the totals. So when you add that all up, our our budget number comes out to five million dollars. Which is real high. So we as a board, and I'll explain why that's so high, I think I have a sheet here explaining that. If I can find it. Yeah, it's on this sheet here. Now, we're gonna go back to, so not, what I was showing you is how I derived and got to five million dollars. Using all of our projects and all the funds that are possibly available. Now, we're gonna go back to this sheet here, okay, when that looks there. The very first top block, it says total of revenue available for twenty twenty-three is four million, hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. That's possible available. Okay, that's using last year's budget and and our projected end-of-year twenty twenty-two values. Now, you go down to scenario one, I put in our expenses there. If we use scenario one, scenario one is just a a story, not saying we're gonna use it, but it gets you guys an idea where we're headed. And what we might need to do, so we put those expenses in there, if we have a reserve of thirty percent, which we need to have some kind of reserve. Have delinquent taxes of four percent. We have a grand total of expenses of six million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, three forty-nine. Now, if you take the available money that's there, available for twenty twenty-three from the top box. And we take the government funds that are possible, that's that, all three numbers that we, all those money that we added up. We're still gonna be short. Hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. If we stay with all the projects that are here. We would have to levy three more mills than what is available. Last year, we leveled levy just short of thirty mills, we have a total available of forty-three. So if we stay with all the projects and use all the ARPA monies and everything that's available. We would still need three mills above forty-three, which is our cap, so we can't do this, just can't do it. So we need to, as a board, decide which of the projects. In order to, okay, let me, I got a footnote there, I wrote in a pen, in order to get our mills back down to thirty. We would have to reduce our budget by about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's where we're headed, so now we're looking for, looking at our project costs sheet. What, do you guys have any ideas, or do you wanna wait till the next meeting and discuss this? What can we do to reduce our costs by seven hundred thousand dollars to get our mills close to what they were last year? Last year, they were twenty-nine point eight five. And if we don't wanna raise our taxes, we need to. Reduce our projects.
Uh Marvin, uh was the any pay pay salary involved in this?
Yes, the twenty twenty-two's pay is in there, now, if you look.
So we got twenty-two pay rate uh salary, we don't have twenty-three.
We don't have that, so that needs to be added in there too, but.
That's gotta be added in there then too.
That, I'm assuming is fifty grand or sixty grand or something like that, so if we can do that, that's pretty minimal compared to getting this down. Seven hundred thousand dollars. So the main thing today, if you guys want to look at these projects and discuss it, and I'll ask Charles and Ken. If we wanted to reduce the projects by seven hundred thousand dollars, what would you recommend that we do?
Well.
I think they would need some time to look this over and come up with.
Well, they've been working with them though.
We've been working on it. One question I did have, Mark, was the the county road allocated state monies, remember that one that we talked about, it was about. What'd you say, it was five hundred, six hundred thousand?
Five hundred and seventy-six.
Where was that at again, I apologize? Oh, you're using that on the bridge?
Just hang on a second, I'll tell you where that five seventy-six is.
Yeah.
Yes, we did, under bridge, yes, it is, right there.
So I guess, keep that in mind with that. Those monies technically could be used for road projects, any type of uh bridge projects that, that's what that allocation's for. That dollar figure of five seventy-six. Technically, how this is shown, you're, it's almost as though you're showing it as if we didn't receive grant money. From the application process that we recently submitted June thirtieth, and we're now using that five seventy-six to cover that project. Cause remember when we took the grant that I submitted on June thirtieth, there's an eighty-twenty split. So we don't know yet if we got it, if we get it, then we would, that would free up that five seventy-six for use elsewhere.
I'm not following it, because the way I was reading it, the state aid that we received, that. Two hundred and thirty thousand every year, I thought that was the, I thought that was the money that made up the federal aid of the eighty-twenty.
No.
So the eighty-twenty split is in addition to that.
That's a completely separate thing, it's kinda like the um the bridge that we currently have bid out, that's gonna be bid this year, built this year.
So we could apply that eighty-twenty. So we could apply that eighty-twenty split to any one or all of these proj-
No, just the bridge.
Just the bridge.
Just the one that we applied for the grant for.
Yeah.
So the eighty-twenty, so we, we could
Realistically, that cuts your cost to one seventy, eight, twenty percent of eight fifty is one hundred and seventy thousand. And it would free up the five seventy-six. So it reduces the two seventy-four down to one seventy on the cost remaining.
So that reduces, that down, gets us down to almost a million dollars then?
Yeah.
Right?
It would, yeah. It'd be close, maybe one point one, somewhere there.
Yep. So there, there, that already, just by that correction, we've gotten that seven hundred thousand dollars, actually eight hundred and fifty.
It should help things, and that's assuming we get the grant money.
Okay, that's, okay, that's the, that's the hiccup in the thing. But the first thing is, we're going to assume that we're gonna, well, I don't, I don't like to, don't like to use that word.
When do they usually let us know if we get it or not?
So according to Brian Fuchs, when I submitted it early June, he said they were hoping, depending on the number of applications, they're hoping to have it pinned down by the end of July. But it could be August, I don't know, he, that he couldn't say.
Yes.
Okay. Let's, let me walk through this so that I understand it, and maybe you guys can do it. Where it says available funds, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, put a line through there and change that to eight hundred and fifty. And then the cost remaining would be zero then, right?
No, so the, the
Oh, I see, you're right.
You, it would be six eighty under available funds? Because that's eighty percent.
Six eighty, right?
Yes. And then the cost remaining would be one seventy.
Okay. Then that five seventy-six could be divided up between Airport Road. Could put five-ten there, and he put seventy-six on the twenty twenty-three patch. Or sixty-six.
We could spread that out. Ideally, I think we'd probably put that on one project, I'm just assuming if we have to jump hoops for that money. Maybe we just tie it to one job.
So that it only has that much paperwork.
Twenty-seven, one or the other.
So we'd probably apply it towards the Airport Road.
Sure.
Okay, so that gets us down to take that one eight-four-two and subtract six eighty off of that, right? One point one six two, one million, one sixty-two, one thirty-six. That basically gets us back to where we gotta be. Close. Assuming that the board wants to use all the ARPA money that's out there, and nobody else is gonna get it.
And that we get the grant.
Yep. And he's checking on the, the grant, the eighty-twenty split. He's checking on that. We should know that in a week, right?
Well, we, I don't know, it's whenever they let, the state lets us know. He was saying the end of July, but it could be August, I don't know. Whenever they decide to grant, award, allocate, so excuse it, when they decide to allocate the monies. Because there's a couple of different situations that could arrive out, arise out of this. They could say, well, we agree with you that this qualifies, but we don't agree, we can't, we have other, in our opinion, there are other bridges within the state that are more pressing matters, so we're gonna allocate money to them for twenty-three, twenty twenty-three builds. But we'll give you this money, but not till twenty twenty-four. It's technically, this opportunity is spread out over, I wanna say, three years. I mean, they could technically give it to us in twenty twenty-five. But that would then make us, put us in kind of a rock and hard place. We would have to then make a decision. Are we okay leaving this bridge closed for that long for the sake of getting free money? Or do we bite the bullet and spin this out of our budget and capital to address it right now? We would have to make that decision.
So you're not gonna find this out until the end of July, possibly?
That was the earliest.
Now, due to physical constraints and construction, we probably couldn't repair this bridge till twenty twenty-four, right?
Twenty twenty-three at the earliest because of, you know, supply chain issues with box cores. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, let's just forget the money for a second, where you kinda gotta add the money to it. Let's look at your projects and see, do we actually wanna have all those projects on there? Is this something that the board wishes to pursue? And the reason that I'm bringing that up, the bridge we gotta fix, twenty-seven, that's the overlay from Hazen up to the crossroads, up to the eighteen oh six intersection. The middle one, I put on there as a hope. We talked about it a couple of times earlier in the year, that because we have these funds, that this would be a good one. Now, I'm gonna put a little plug in for that. I have had more than one individual from the ambulance call and actually stop me on the streets even and say, why can't we pave that road? It's really bad to haul these patients when they're very sick with our critical equipment. We can't drive down that road at even a respectable speed because it's too dang rough. The airport's willing to give us the right of way, and I think it's a worthwhile project. I think being as we got all the monies that came to us this last year due to COVID, that we shouldn't, we certainly should be able to improve our county on that project, but that's my plug. Then the Mercer County seven repair, that's, is that by Golden Valley?
Correct.
West entrance.
Two hundred down to Golden Valley.
Yep, the west entrance, Golden Valley.
Yeah.
Now, I'm gonna be quiet. Does anybody have any thoughts on these projects, whether they're worthwhile or should possibly be cut due to budget constraints? Or do we wanna wait till the next meeting?
I think we need to digest a little bit of it, but, I mean, we're, we're, we're projecting estimated costs, I mean, we don't know what oil is gonna do. I mean, when you talk about a two point seven million dollar overlay, you know, a ten percent change in
Kind of a three percent or, or three million or?
Or two and a half. I mean, yeah, it could go either way. But my question, so I, I think you've kinda answered it, but anytime you had available funds, you took those out, and then the remaining is what you put in for the mill levy request, correct? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not budgeting outside funds within the mill so that
No.
We have, okay.
I took those out.
Okay.
It is a lot to digest, and I knew it would be. Believe me, it took us three meetings to make it this confusing. Not, not intending to, we're trying to get it as transparent as we can. But you guys wanna just, what we can do now, if you look at the sheet that our auditor prepared, she has the twenty twenty-three salaries in there on this particular one, right?
I did not prepare this. This was sent to me from the road department.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, okay. What I can do for you guys, for all of us and for myself, and I'll work with our auditor to get the twenty twenty-three values put in there so that it's a hundred percent complete. And get that email to you. We don't need to wait till the meeting, I email it to you as soon as I get it done.
Yeah, I would like to see a proposed budget amount.
Yep. Because right, right now, the
So I just ask Ken, then, is this the proposed budget for the road department then? Or are we working both off of these two worksheets now?
I think you should only be working off of this sheet.
Is this what you guys came up together?
Yeah, we worked on, mostly on the projects, yeah.
Okay.
And there should be, well, this one should be, other than the projects, this is what we, I come up with.
So my, my question for you, Ken, is under consultant fees, you went up five hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
That's based on the number of projects we have.
I say, and is that due to all these that we have listed in here?
Yeah, if you go to the next page, you got payments to contractors of four point one. That's a direct correlation with the seven thirty-five, so if you get those together, you're gonna get
That's because we have so many projects coming up.
Projects, right.
Okay. And then the increase in the gravel and crushing is just because that just happens to be something that's really going up in price, or?
No, that's what we usually typically, if we put, if we find gravel within the county, that's what it costs to get so much crushed, and the hundred thousand, I think it was for the royalties for the landlord that owns that material. I don't, I don't think last year, we didn't put anything in, because we
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the royalties, too, yeah.
We have a, a lead up north of Hazen that we're working on, so if we can, hopefully, there's enough there, we can crush. We, we'd like to, because I mean, sooner or later, that pile's gonna be gone by, off of thirty-one there, so.
So that royalties is to obtain gravel?
Right, the royalties, yep.
Okay.
Glad you brought it up, Liz, I forgot to mention that we increased that. One thing I've discussed with Ken is just a thought, that we're pursuing the gravel, we should have the money available to lock it up if we do find it, so that's why we put that in there.
Right.
Our present gravel pile is possibly good, this is just to shoot from the hip, nine years. So if, if we don't find gravel, which we probably will once in a while, but we may wanna start budgeting and buying one-third of our budget, one-third of our gravel every year as a budget expense so that we can keep our pile there instead of nine years closer to twelve or thirteen years. So we always have a reserve. Rather than wait till it runs out and then panic. You know? So that's why, that's another reason, if, if we don't find gravel, that hundred and thirty thousand is a good number to leave in there because we might use it for purchasing gravel to prolong our lifespan on, on supplying gravel to the consumer.
And, and the right of way increases due to the fact that we're gonna have so many projects, correct?
Right, that many project.
Yeah, the, well, preliminary engineering slash right of way, yeah, that's what you're alluding to, yeah. And we could spread the costs out, we just chose to spread them out over contractor costs, the buckets of money. I mean, I think you can use some of those monies to pay fees to, you know, I mean, it's it's a horse of peace, really, you pick where you wanna spend the money, you wanna pay the engineer, you wanna pay the contractor with those monies, you know?
I just wanna understand why there are increases in certain areas and what they apply for.
Absolutely, yep. You're dead, you're dead right, yep. And I don't know if it's worth mentioning either, I mean, I had a twenty twenty-two snapshot update on project costs, including broken out between engineering costs and contractor costs that I shared with Ken and Marv. And, you know, I try to be conservative with these numbers for reasons, so we don't get kind of in a wonky spot, you know, where we're spending more than what we budgeted, so I mean, we're trending underneath even for twenty twenty-two, pretty, pretty healthy amount. Just because, it's usually the way they work out. I try not to do it so much so that we budget way more than we need to, but I also wanna do it enough so it's, you know, we're safe from overspending, I guess, on our budgets.
Well, for me, I need more finite numbers. There's a lot of supposits here, and I mean, if, and in the, in the end, we need to have, I don't know, like I would say, more exact. And as far as project goes, if the money's not there, we're gonna have to cut some projects. It's, it's that simple, so.
Yeah, we can draw a line in the sand what we would tax, and we'll do as many projects as we can. We just have to prioritize them. If we get additional funding.
But what I'm getting at is when you're talking about a five hundred thousand dollar swing here on numbers, there's no way I'd be able to make a decision today. I need something a little more.
And the problem with that, too, you're not, on that bridge one, we may not know if we have monies secured for that or not by the time you need to make a decision, so that's the hard part about it, right? So maybe you wanna be more conservative there and then bump another project out so that you feel better about the, overall numbers.
Right.
Yep.
I say, that's what I'm kinda leaning toward is, I may bump a project, yeah.
Because it's the second item here on the proposed project, you know, Mercer County twenty-seven overlay, two, two point seven million. I mean, you, you cut that, that's quite a, quite a savings. But like I said, I, but I don't know what it's gonna, I mean, you might say, you delay that a year, you're gonna spend way more than two point seven. Well, we need the money to begin with. We, we, we can't do it if we don't have the money. And like I said, that's just because it's the second item on here.
Right, well, you can always design it, and maybe you just do half of it one year and half the other.
So, until you get us, you know, some, some more precise numbers, you know, okay. But, but it's, I, I get it, it's a start.
Ken or Charlie, do you have anything to add to what Marv kinda touched on?
He laid it out pretty cool.
Okay.
Okay.
I did work with, on, on that budget sheet, I got my numbers working with Ken and Rachel. And on the project, I got those from working with Charles.
Okay.
And we were all three working together on it, so I just happened to be the one that typed it all up in the, into a form.
Okay.
I just have one question, did you go look at the rumble script?
I did, I did.
Do you know what I'm talking about now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have a plan in place to address that. Beck told paving while they're in here doing twenty-six overlay, and we're going to, we're going to address that with our patching budget. We have plenty of budget in the patching for this year to, to help.
I was just, just asking. Thank you for looking into it.
No, you're not wrong, I drove over, you can, can't miss it, let's put it that way.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you guys, I can't remember the, the, the street number of that paved road. Anyhow, by, down there by Ronnie Gunches, okay? What number is?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Well, yeah, it's got a street number. But any other, I believe there's a, a cattle pass in there, and there's always a, a whippy in there. But the other day, I drove the, the other pickup, and I, there's another spot that showed up. Either, I think it's on a little more to the east or on the west, but I'd like to have you guys look at that. It, all of a sudden, I, I've never known that, that to be there before, and all of a sudden, there's a, quite a
So that's the paved road?
That's the paved road.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you guys could check that out, yeah, like I said, you know where that cattle pass is, there's always that whippy. But there's someplace, I don't know if, what happened, the road sunk, so. So just please do that, okay?
Okay, Marv, did you have something to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the board aware of one more thing that came up, and we talked about it before, that these bridges are being inspected, and then we might have some, oh, by the ways, and we just, just encountered one. Asked Ken and Charles to go look at a bridge, and they did, I believe they did. Anyhow, we got our inspection report, and from the information, I'll have all that Charles explained a little bit. The bridge is on County Road seventeen, two miles east of Zapp.
Imagine that.
And I'll let Charles tell us what that inspection report says. And it kinda puts an idea that we better be careful how we spend our money and how we, how we move it so that we can meet all these obligations. Go ahead, tell us.
Yeah, it's getting tricky because, you know, unforeseen hurdles, you know, from a budgeting perspective with these bridges. And we've talked about it before, being kind of a double-edged sword, it's a good thing and a bad thing, right? I mean, they're being thorough and they're, they're checking things, but so the situation we have here, the, the pilings beneath the structure are bowing, so they, they tied a critical condition flag on the, the structure due to those issues on, on each side of the the street bed, or in each embankment, essentially. The pilings are bowing, so you know, I, I'm probably, the, the options they gave us right now are to reduce the posting to ten ton, I think it was. I forget what it's currently at.
It would've been eighty thousand pounds.
Oh, so, okay, but they had, they had suggested repair slash replacement of the pilings, which you do something like that, I mean, it's an older structure, right? At some point, then you need to assess, what is it, does it make sense, financial sense to, to Band-Aid for a bad, lack of a better term, the, the problem? Or to completely replace the structure and get far more value out of your, more bang for your buck, so to speak? You know, more life out of the structure itself. That's a big question that we're gonna have coming out of this, because I think the act of, of repair on that existing structure is gonna cost a significant amount of money. However, the upstream tributary that this thing allows or conveys water through is large enough that a full replacement of the structure might be pretty expensive. And I'm talking to the tune of anywhere from four to six million dollars. So if you're, if that's true, and if that's, if that's a, if my, if my gut is correct on those numbers, it may make more sense to do a Band-Aid approach, a repair approach, I guess you could call it, where you may spend one and a half to two million dollars instead of four million to five million. instead of four million to five million dollars on a new structure. Of course, we find out this news shortly after the application deadline for this bridge, these bridge monies, which I also intend on discussing with the state and Mr. Brian Fuchs to see.
Sure.
Is there any way we can extend that, or they can be?
Get in on this again, you know?
Yeah.
Because of this one that was dropped in our lap, you know?
Is that part of the truck route east of Zapp?
Yep.
Yeah.
And ten-ton is?
Transload?
Yeah.
So again, the semi run across?
Ten-ton.
Not ten-ton.
That's why I asked if it was a truck route, because.
Cause it is.
That's completely different.
Then.
Is this the north-south road?
Yes.
North-South Road, two miles east of Zapp.
Yeah, so if you come around the south side of Basin Transload and then go north on the truck route, it's the one, I don't know what, quarter mile south of two-hundred?
Right.
History on that is that, when Basin Transload, they were, they were talking about doing that structure replacement back in, what, eleven or twelve, we?
Right.
Somewhere in that, and they, they did the reconstruction on that road, they paid for most of it, I think, because of the transload, when they were doing, hauling all that oil in and out, or whatever, and, uh, frac sand, well, then the oil went south, and then you never heard anything about the bridge repair. In fact, they were gonna pay, I think they were gonna actually pay for the bridge, if I remember right, but, or most of it.
Uh, that's one of the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It, well, it, uh, the board and Charlie, the other part is that particular structure is, you drive, and I went across it this morning by accident, actually, but the bridge is down quite low. So when you talk and putting pilings and stuff, I mean, naturally, that, uh, when that flooded that time, it took the, took the guardrails right off, I mean, it was under, under the water, so it's not.
Right.
It's not even, uh, too usable then, so it needs to come basically up in the air, I mean, it, it's down in the hole, and that's how I think the design was, is that, well, the water's gonna go across this structure, well, them days are done and over with, and the part is, is that it's got a concrete deck with a probably I-beam system, but the pilings is, that's all wood down in there, is that right, Charlie?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, the other part is, they really haven't been using too much truck business in there, which is probably, I don't know, pro or con, but I, I haven't seen a tanker go by there for quite a while. They usually do it by rail. Yeah, so to replace that structure, Charlie, what are we looking there, uh, are we looking at a bridge structure then, to?
That would be up to the state, if we got federal aid, which we would certainly wanna do, because, I don't think, you know, the counties, you know, financially, so it would be one of those things where, I, I don't know their, I don't know, um, the process they take to decide whether or not they would prefer bridge versus a box, but they do apparently have a process that they utilize to decide that, to make that decision, um, because they would ultimately be spending more as well.
Then, and, and another question that comes up, and Marvin, Rowley mentioned it too, is, uh, I, I don't know if Basin Transload, I think they sold that, that particular project, there's a, a new company on there, and, uh, but, uh, do they have any, say, liability on this road now, or on road and bridge? Uh, they, they, like you said, Ken, they, or whatever it took, basically, we gotta get, get, you know, this oil in here, so is there any contractual, uh, help or agreements that's between that particular entity and, and Mercer County? And that'd be something to?
Some form of contractual obligation that they?
Something to, to investigate or, or look at, possibly.
Certainly possible. Along, along that line, I'm, I'm gonna send a letter to our state's attorney, asking him to review that contract. I was a person that was impacted by Basin Transload, so I'm a little bit in touch with what was going on down there.
Right.
Uh, so I'll send a letter to him and see if there's anything in the contract. Now, we did bring this up prior to our former auditor leaving, and I asked if we had anything, and at that time, we, it was, it probably not, but I'm gonna send this to the state's attorney and see if somebody can look up the agreements we had with Basin Transload at that time, and see if we can get any assistance we can.
Sure. Okay. Well, I think we've passed off the road, I think we can move on.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Okay, you can, thanks, Charlie.
No other new surprises, that's all.
Well, yeah, that's just, every time I talk to them, there's another bridge.
Terry?
I'd like to report on how many bridges we have in the county, and we're gonna have to talk.
That's what I was afraid of.
It's inevitable.
We're gonna be a little bit more short and sweet. I'm gonna start, uh.
Oh, Dee, are you on the pile?
I'm, I'm gonna start with the, the, uh, parts of our department that aren't gonna have any changes except for the salaries, in which, you know, typically, the auditor is plugged in, and then you'll have the final numbers, but they'll stay the same, the budget will stay the same except for the salary, and that would, we, we would expect, our youth bureau, so the salaries will change, but nothing else in our budget will.
There he is.
That's, yeah, forty-two, one-one-one. And then the second one would be the, uh, task force, and we expect no changes there, except for salaries. The Homeland Security Fund, we'd like to leave that alone, uh, there'll be no changes, but, uh, I don't believe we used that, so we, we didn't have a grant to apply for, but if that would become available, that's what that's for, uh, so like I say, we didn't use it this year, but if one would come available, we sure could take a look at that with the board's approval next year, so we'd like to leave that amount there, and, and expecting no changes. The temporary deputies, I see we increased that a little bit, and, and, right now, uh, I have both of mine, you know, one was, uh, John Tongi, and the other one was Chuck Dahl, they worked the gate stuff, or see, you see that, our line items kinda flattened out, but that's something we'll probably need in the future, so we left it there, actually increased it a little bit. It's a minimal increase, we brought it to fifteen from, uh, the twenty-twenty-two was eleven-three-thirty, so, in case that opportunity becomes available, it's much cheaper to put someone out here on a gate on a part-time basis at the door for security than to have a full-time person there that we're paying all the benefits for, and a higher wage. So that, that I'd like to see stay the same in the future. The county coroner, uh, we left that the same, we've never met the full amount, or the coroner has, so, but, that don't mean that we can't catch something that could drive us into meeting the full amount next year, in, in that budget, so I'd like to see that stay the same. The, uh, between the vehicles, it can get a little confusing with new vehicles and what we did, we had one budgeted for this year, and of course, I talked to you earlier in the year, we couldn't acquire a new vehicle because of various reasons, uh, out of our control, so we'd like to see that, and I think we rolled that over into the next year budget in a line item, but, uh, we're asking for one more vehicle next year, to keep our fleet going current, so that, that's an ask, and.
So next year, you're gonna possibly get two?
Get two, yeah, the one we couldn't get this year, and then the one for next year. So, I'd, I'd like to see that in there preliminarily, and if, if there's questions or arguments or whatever, I'll, I'll make that argument when we got more time, so I can make it, make it better. The, uh, game and fish grant I would like to put, and this again is an ask, I'd like to see it in the preliminary budget, and we can discuss it then, but I'm asking for a new boat motor for our Zodiac boat. Uh, we had that, uh, situation in Beulah, and, uh, you know, then, some of that equipment sits for a very long time, and it was very apparent that we could probably repair it, make it work barely for now, but it needs to be replaced. So at five thousand dollars, that increase, that's what that would be for, was a boat motor, for that Zodiac boat. Onto, uh, the, uh, the rest of the sheriff's department's budget, uh, there are some big changes in that, and, and, uh, what, what Ashley, I had Ashley do, and what we looked at, is that the line items that are affected by inflation, you know, it's, what was it, nine-point-three percent at the last thing I seen on TV, I had her increase them for next year for ten, at ten percent, so, and that's something, you know, coming in for a preliminary budget, that'll give you guys a number that we can look at, and then maybe we can fine tune, but, uh, so you'll see the line item numbers that that applies to, you can, you, you can, you can see them. Uh, the only other one being, or the other ones being higher that I noted on that was gas, oil, and fuel, everybody's seen what that happened with that this year, so I had her put that in at a raise of, uh, twenty-five percent from last year. Now, it looks like that's gonna come down, so maybe that's something we can look at. I was looking into the future, I didn't expect it, but if it's already coming down, who knows? But I think that's something the board's gonna have to, uh, help me out with, with trying to predict the future on that for next year.
Good guess, right?
Yeah.
Our, our, our county is, you know, it's, well, it's eleven-hundred-and-fifteen square miles with seventy-five square miles of water, we're gonna have to patrol it regardless, we gotta get from point A to point B, so I don't see our, the amount of gas, oil, and fuel, diesel, that we use changing, but I see the price rapidly changing on us one way or another in the next year.
Yeah.
How do you predict that? So, you guys can help me with that, but, uh, that's why we raised it twenty-five percent. Our contracts, uh, came in, that, that came up substantially, but that's out of our control, you know, that's what they're offering us for them same contracts that you guys approved for the year. Other big ones that changed was, uh, jail expenses. I had Ashley double that on paper for the preliminary budget, because if we're going from twenty prisoners last year to forty prisoners this year, you know, you can see where that would have to double, and that's why we did that on the, uh, on the double, and, and the same with the prisoner, prisoner medical care, but keeping in mind now, that these figures seem high, we went up another thirty-five thousand dollars, but keeping in mind though, that's ultimately isn't the county's expense, thirty, if we use that thirty-five thousand dollars out of my budget, that's coming back to you and the general fund from the federal government at a, at a one-for-one reimbursement, or a hundred percent reimbursement, so that's just on paper, that don't affect your general fund.
Cause we'll see it on the revenue side.
You're, you're gonna see it back on the revenue side, but it's still, I gotta show it to you on my budget side. And, and keeping that in mind, uh, you can see with the June report this year that come out, or this month that come out, our revenues up with, uh, with our, 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 prisoners are up to twenty-five again. Uh, I would expect that, uh, as soon as we can, and we're not there yet, cause we're still training, but to double. So, with that in mind, overall, our budget at ten percent that we're asking, uh, you to look at to increase, to keep things safe, as far as my numbers, uh, we look at our overall budget increase, and with a salary, whatever you guys decide for a salary increase for the department, minus the one more employee that we added, uh, we, we look at the overall sheriff's depart, department's budget, or what we cost the county, uh, for services for the year, of going down, adding the revenue back in from the federal government, going down, uh, well over a quarter of a million dollars. So, you know, you, by the time we do all our numbers, if they were at seventeen, one-point-seven million last year, something like that, uh, they're gonna be higher this year, but the actual cost of the county is gonna be one-point-five, something, after you get the revenue back into the general fund. So our, our, we're holding our budget, and hopefully helping you guys out with some of the other issues you're having in other departments.
And, and the, one of the reasons you had to add the employee too, was because the state is required, correct?
And we were gonna have to do that anyway, like I discussed before, the, the law changed, we used to, uh, combine it, we, we had a, a jailer and a dispatcher on the floor at all times twenty-four-seven. They want two dedicated, and this would be whether we're running, running one prisoner or forty prisoners, they want two dedicated in the jail and one in dispatch, so we had no choice there. In order to make that, make it work in our schedule, we were gonna need that person, but, and it just so happens that it worked in perfect for my project, so I'll take it as a win. But I, I think once she plugs in our numbers for salaries and what you guys give us harder, or, or we can, we can help with that too, but once, we, we need a hard figure of what the top end, I guess, for the preliminary budget you're looking at for raises are, we could give you a hard and fast number, but until then, them are our numbers, we're, the, the, the things that change with, uh, inflation, we added ten percent, except for fuel went up, prisoner care and jail expenses, but them are gonna be, like I say, shown back to you on the revenue side, so, that, I will take questions.
Are you, are you giving them half meals then, or?
What's that?
Half meals.
Are you giving them half meals?
Yeah, happy meals. If it makes them happy, we'll give them happy meals.
Happy meal? Yeah.
I see you bought them a basketball.
Yeah.
Did they wear that other one out a little bit?
Oh, they, they, they wear things out.
They do?
At times, but, yeah, and some of them issues too, like I say, if, if, the, uh, the more comfortable we can make it back there.
Yeah.
To, the, the better for our staff, because.
Better for everybody.
Yeah, the, the less problems we have, and, and with that said too, also, we have not, I haven't, we haven't encountered any, uh, any unforeseen problems with the federal government, they've been very easy to work with, and we're coming online fast, and some of them expenses you've seen initially already this year, you're not gonna see them again next year, like our equipment and ramping that stuff up, you know, with that, uh, the transport equipment, stuff like that, you won't see that again, cause that stuff lasts.
Okay, and, and, and thank goodness the sewer system's working fine, right?
Yep, it is.
Jim, Jim's a happy man, he's on vacations.
We'll line some stuff up for him when he gets back.
Keep, keep the jewelry out of there.
Yes, and that's what I understand too about putting that grinder in too, that we were running the risk of running metal through that anyway, and it, and they didn't even wanna give us a quote or insurance on that if we weren't catching that metal coming through anyway, so this is a win-win for us, you know, we're catching the metal and we're saving that pump, cause they, nobody'll offer guarantees or warranties or insurance, they won't even bid it, cause they don't wanna.
Right.
You run metal through a pump, it's done, I guess.
The one, the one who cleans out that strainer might not say win-win.
Yeah, yeah, that is true.
Under the other for description for your job.
That is true, so, but, no, with, with no questions, we'll get out of your hair.
I think we're good. Any questions?
You did a nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Don, you walked in just in time, you must've had a third sense.
Her ear, her ears were ringing.
This is gonna be so short, you guys?
Gonna be short, she says.
It's gonna be short, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so, the only two things that I really want to mention in my budget is, I would really like my temporary help Kathy to get bumped up to, I planned for eighteen, if that's agreeable. She's been here for seven years, I'm training somebody new for tax season this year.
Phone her.
She is gonna be so much help to me, because she's already trained and she knows how to do this, she's gonna be such a big help to me, I just would really like to see her get, she has stepped into the recorder's office once, I know when they were both gonna be gone, she's, seems more than willing to step up if any office has to close, to cover the office, to keep it open, I just think that she should be rewarded, for lack of a better word for that. The other thing is, I'm looking at probably needing a new printer, my printer is also seven years old.
Yeah, Derby had indicated that before.
It is starting to make god-awful noises, and, and so, um, I'm probably just gonna jump in and get it before this one even pukes, because my luck, it's gonna puke while I'm trying to print out eight thousand statements or ten thousand tax statements, so I may just even put that in this year, I think I have enough in my budget this year to stop, start the lease payments already. Um, the one thing I did notice though, was when I did it, I did not realize that I had to pay almost an extra three hundred dollars a year for the maintenance contract, so if I could add that to the twenty-six hundred, and if you take that, um, sixteen hundred off for the total cost of the printer and the maintenance, I'm back down to almost what my office supplies budget was for the year before, so I'm really not increasing it for any cause except the printer, so.
Approximately, how many hours does Kathy work?
I plan for six hundred a year.
Six hundred?
Because she will come in, you know, if somebody's on vacation and somebody gets sick, um, if somebody's on vacation, somebody has to go to a funeral, I mean, she comes in for just anything, pretty much, that we ask her to come in for, so.
Wow.
She's very.
She sounds remarkable.
Oh, yeah, she is very accommodating, she's just, I hope she sticks around for many years, but.
Well, that's why you incentivize.
So, right?
Yeah, yeah. Depends, if we, if we, the question was, it's up to you whether it's up to us. If we put a cap on there, and she's working six hundred dollars, six hundred hours a year, then she possibly could be only making fifteen dollars an hour, but if you don't
But if you don't put a cap on, on that, on that part-time help and you give it an hourly rate, then, then it works fine.
Let, let me see if I can get my, someone slap me here. But if Dawn says she wants a budget of a hundred and forty-two thousand, and she wants to pay someone twenty bucks an hour when she runs out of money, that's,
That's her choice.
Say it real crass, that's your problem. You know? Um, I don't know, do we regulate in, in our office wages?
Let me, let me ask you this. Let's say we budget a hundred and forty-two thousand. Instead of buying a printer, she pays it all to her new help.
That the voters can decide.
Next time around, you know?
Well, in the end, it's, right. We don't micromanage her department, but she's doing something crazy, hopefully though, cause we, we
It'll get out. Stuff like that gets out.
So I, I think what your bottom line turn to say, Gene, is that you would request the amount of monies and it's your choice as to how you choose to allocate that. And if the community feels like you're allocating that appropriately, then that would show up in the election next time around.
Okay.
Thank you, Liza.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Dawn?
So, so Dawn, you're planning on basically getting that lease in a printer or
Prior to, right?
Prior to this tax, next
Just to make sure, you know?
So your tax statements get out because
I'm, yes, it is my
There's, there's nothing worse
I would like to, yes. Like I said, I think I have enough in my budget. I have quite a bit of money left over yet that I haven't spent and I
For this year.
Right, and I'm not, I probably would not, I think I can get through the eight thousand estimates and if, you know, if that, but I would like to get it before I have to actually run the actual statements. So I would, I'm thinking October, November sometime in there, is what I'm thinking.
I think it's wise to be on top of that, cause that's definitely something that could really hurt your department if you don't have it.
Yeah, because even the guy I'm leasing from said they're ordering out, you know, like depending on what model you want, it could be four to six months before you'd get it anyway. So I'd like to get it ordered and get on it, I guess, but makes sense. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Dawn.
Carmen?
Yeah, the only reason I was on here too was the, that additional But I am glad I'm here because talking about salaries, I wanna leave it where I have given it to Sam. Because it's a salary position now, my position, it's accepted and then the assistant will be hourly. And that's where, and then I already gave it to Oliver, and that's where they're looking. They were agreeable to that. But for either, it's, let's put it this way, it's not a raise for me. It's actually a cut, which is fine. But that's where I wanna make sure that Sam knew that. But the only thing is, I wanted to see where it was sitting because you're gonna, we're putting in more for the, the, the other person has to have health benefits.
Benefits, yes.
So nine-one-one has always paid my health benefits. General fund has never paid my health benefits. Now the new person will be paid out of the general fund through the EM position, but half of that will be paid by that EMPG grant. So that's why I put the numbers in there. I used last year's budget for that health, but I mean, that's where
Which is fine, because our health stays the same.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Did you ask other counties around us, like, if they have another position in their office and what the
I am the only one in the state that has two counties and I'm the only one that's been there.
And this is, and this was their average salary here? Cause I haven't looked into that.
For their, their assistant or their second person, is what you're asking, Sam?
What I'm saying is, there is no one in the state that has two counties and only one person. There's very few others like Burley County.
And do you know what they're paying their
She's got two counties and she's got two people in her, there's actually three people with two counties.
And do you know what they're paying in them, what their wages are?
No, but I can look it up.
We can do that together, cause I
Cause I think you just wanna be comparable, right, Sam?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I didn't do it, because no one has, yeah, but I'll look it up. I'll do mine. And I'm looking at thirty-four director, twenty for assistant, but it depends. I wanna be able to
And this is a full-time assistant?
Oh yeah.
Right?
Absolutely. And, but I wanna be able to, you know, have a little leeway in there. You know, not just lock it in at twenty there, not just lock it in at thirty-four. I wanna be able to see what I can give for an assistant.
I gotcha.
It's a lot of work.
Well, and like, like we talked with Dawn too.
And I'll give those wages and then we can compare it.
Hmm, okay.
Absolutely. But it's gonna be the same work, cause their office doesn't do the GIS. I do GIS, I do nine-one-one, two counties and EM. So, yeah.
So you're saying we get a pretty bang for a pretty good return for our dollar?
And, and this has not been easy, but if we wanna keep that database and this mapping, then yeah, it'll be good. It'll be good for all of us. I truly believe it's gonna be, yeah, cause Burley doesn't even touch any kind of mapping. They don't even touch it. So that's why comparing it to someone else, yeah, but, you know, we'll look at it. I just, yeah.
We started somewhere.
Cause if you look at a GIS department, how are you gonna add in those that are doing the mapping compared to ones that are just doing nine-one and EM? And, and they don't even do nine-one, they just do EM. Cause your nine-one-one is like, it's a separate, so that's why I didn't go and compare it.
Cause there really isn't a comparison.
There isn't. And that's, that's the point. But you still want me to go look at numbers? Cause I really think that I haven't been overpaid and I'm not asking for a raise, I'm asking to lower it. I'll probably lose three thousand dollars a year. Which is fine, because I'm getting an assistant.
I'd say, but you'll get actually somebody who can help.
And I, I wanna go forward with this project. It's been very frustrating not to get more work done and go forward. Thank God, you know, the sheriff's office wants this too. You know what I mean?
Right. Yeah, you got some, some people pushing.
I got a commissioner that understands too how important, you know what I mean? So it's been huge. So to go out and find a bunch of numbers, I, I really don't have time. But I'll look. I'll see if there's someone. And, and I'll
So
Just cause I don't know, like, yeah, a job description or, you know, like
Job description, absolutely.
Duties and like what the requirements are and like how that is compensated. That's, you know
Right, and when, when were you planning to put this in, or hire this individual, in January or?
Oh yeah, that's when the budget starts, January first.
Okay.
Oh, job description, absolutely, yes. Oh yeah.
Oh, that's, that's what I was kinda wondering, what all, what are all the requirements that this person
Would need, yeah.
Cause if you gotta sit there and train them up and, and they don't know nothing, we're not gaining nothing in a little bit too long. Right?
Extra stress.
Yeah?
Okay.
Anything else for Carmen?
She likes to sleep at night.
It's good.
All right.
But yeah, I'll, I'll get it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carmen.
All right, Cindy.
Cindy!
Best for last?
Best for last.
Well, I don't even actually know if I should be here, because I thought everybody was talking about their wages and now you say you're not, so. I don't know if I should even be in here right now, so. I had originally figured my budget at the seventy-five cents an hour that we were told to put in because I'm tired of begging for you to fix the mistake that the commissioners had made when I got my promotion in twenty-eighteen on, by starting me at a level one, oh, sorry, and getting slapped in the face every year when I'm asking to, for it to be fixed. Then I read in the newspaper that you're starting at dawn at two dollars and forty cents less an hour than Darby, and I find out that Michelle is making a dollar thirty-two less than Sandy, who had been here for forty years. Um, I've been the tax, in the tax director's office thirteen of my sixteen years, four of them as the tax director, yet I make eight dollars and ten cents less than Gary would be making, and he had a vehicle to take home every day of the year. What a benefit that was and how much it would save me on gas. I'm not asking for a vehicle. And Todd had told me that if you guys fix this on your own, you would not have to pay back pay, but if I go to the labor department, you will. Um, Jen isn't where she's supposed to be at either. The wage study doesn't even reflect all the work she does in the GIS system, doing all our splits in there. That hasn't, hadn't been done since twenty-fourteen. She's trying to get that caught up, so that's where on that wage, on the budget, I had upped her salary quite a bit too because that doesn't reflect the GIS. And that, the wage that I put in there reflects the new wage I want for both of us with the seventy-five cent raise. But, I mean, I just don't, I, I don't know what to say. I'm very frustrated. I don't know why you start when everybody else gets a new uh, a promotion. They get almost the prior person's wage and I'm still stuck at level one after I don't know what you expect from me. I really don't. I mean, I think I've been pretty patient. And now I've been the tax director for four years at level one. I'm at level one after sixteen years. Is that what you want? Is me to go to the labor department and have to pay all, pay back four years of back pay? I don't know. I can get a lawyer as soon as my mom's house sells. It should be selling soon. I don't wanna have to spend all of my inheritance money on fighting you guys, but I will, if that's what you want. Cause that's what you're telling me that I'm not worth it, but Dawn is and Michelle is. That's what you're telling me, that I'm worth a level one and eight, I'm worth eight dollars and ten cents less than Gary and he had a vehicle even. But everybody else gets what their, the predecessor got. I had to get certified, Jen had to get certified. We did it. We did what we had to do. We're doing a job. As far as I'm concerned, we bust our butts just like everybody else, but how, how do I deserve to be at a level one after being here for sixteen years? And you guys won't fix it. It's horrible. And the only one who even acknowledged it last year was Gene, and he said, how, how do I make you happy and make everybody else mad? Why would anybody be mad? I'm probably the, I'm, I'm sure I'm the only one who's been here sixteen years and at a level one. It's horrible.
So we have wage studies, and I know we've looked at it before, but I think we definitely need to look at this department more closely. I know Cindy's expressed this to me as well too.
And the wage study was done now six years ago.
Six years ago, which is out of there.
That was a long time ago, yeah. So I'm sure that's not accurate as to where Cindy should actually be at, where Jen. You know, there's no way that that's reflected.
But you guys don't, you haven't, you didn't look at the wage study when you, you decided Dawn's wage or when Michelle got her wage? You just let them do whatever they want. I just watched the video and you tell Dawn that her deputy can start at whatever she wants. Well, you're not even going by the wage study.
Well, and we had no control over Michelle's pay?
Why?
Because that's the state's attorney's choice, not ours.
Well, she's not a, she's not an elected official. Wha, I don't understand.
The, um, elected, those, those positions, their employees The only, the only way I can say it generally is, um, let's, who should I pick on? State's attorney. So the state's attorney gets a budget. They, they present us with a budget. And I have no idea what their budget is. I'm, I'm just gonna use numbers off my head here, roll it off my head here. So let's say the state's attorney says a hundred and fifty thousand a year for a budget. And that includes the salaries. Now, if that state's attorney, treasurer, auditor, register of deeds and sheriff, they have, they're, they're elected, so they set the wages within their departments. And if they feel that they have enough money in their, in their budget to pay someone a particular wage, that's what they do. We don't set the wage of those individuals within the department.
Okay, what I'm saying is, is, okay, most, none of you, the only one who was in here was Wayne. I never ever should've started at a level one. I had, had nine years in that department when I got my promotion. I never should've started at a level one. I had two of my classes for my certification under my belt. So I know that's not your fault, but I've been asking for years to get it fixed and it hasn't been fixed. And now you guys have decided to start, starting people wherever you want. Doesn't matter about the wage study. So you shouldn't even be looking at the wage study. I should be making what Gary had been making, so fix it. That's what I'm saying. And Todd is the one who told me, if you guys don't fix it, I can go to the labor department and you'll have to be paying me back payment. Todd told me that. I didn't come up with that on my own. I'm not asking for back pay. I'm not asking for the vehicle. I want it fixed. And I'm so mad, I first was gonna say, I want it fixed today. I wanna start making it today, but I'm not even doing that cause it's not in my budget and I'm not a jerk. I just want it fixed for next year. I want it fixed. I deserve to have it fixed. I'm a, I'm a dedicated employee. I'm a hard worker. I just want it fixed. I know it's not your fault that it happened, but you guys are the only ones who can fix it. I can't fix it.
And I guess a little bit in Cindy's defense is with that wage study and with that wage chart, there's nothing in our policy that says after you meet certain criteria, requirements or years of service, you jump up a tier. So, you know, I mean, I guess
And every department should be following that wage study, whether it's elected or not, and it's in their budget. They should still be following that wage study.
I agree. It should be more structured throughout.
You should only start out at a certain tier, whether you're an elected official and have it in your budget or not. You shouldn't be able to start them wherever they want.
So what I mean is, like, I think that we need to come up with something more, uh,
Uniform?
Yeah, and uniform in our policy that says, you know, and then it also is gonna hold the department accountable for doing, you know, a review for employee, but at, you know, in Cindy's position, she's the head of her department, so at what point does she deserve that jump up in tier? Now.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think what, we, just let me get a couple of things out here. One thing is, is through policy manual. One other is if we had like an employee relations committee that actually looked down and went through these things, whether it's any department, it, it's a way to do an in-depth search and correct irregularities and prevent them from happening in the future. I think that should really be a portfolio that we create. I mean, I, I've done it when I was the mayor of the Buella. They'd had that structure for a long time and it kinda kept uniform. But I mean, obviously city and county are two different structures because all the employees at the city, none of them are elected. But in the land use department, there's no election there. You need some type of, um, committee or something to make sure that we don't do this in the future and that we get it corrected.
I mean, all of our, all of our positions, whether it was elected or appointed or on that wage study, it wasn't a separate rule for elected or appointed. Like you guys have it in your mind that they have it in their budget, so they can do whatever they want, that
Well
That's because we don't have it in policy that says that it needs to be a certain way.
Right.
I believe. Is that correct?
I wanna go on record that I disagree with Gene. That, I'm not angry, but my, my voice might sound that way. We have line items within a department for all their different expenses. One of those line items is salaries. We can't just say that they have a budget of a hundred and fifty thousand and they can determine what that person gets paid. That person has to get paid within the line item that we have set for that. So that's, that's how it's supposed to be. They can't just say, well, they can determine the salary. If they only have, let's just say that we have, we set clerical assistant or somebody for a department and we put a cap on that of forty thousand or whatever the number is. That department head can hire somebody, long as they don't, and they can determine if they deserve that up to that forty thousand, but they cannot exceed it.
Right.
So that person has to follow what our line item designation is. That's how we control the salaries. We don't just give them a salary of, of half a million dollars and they can decide which employee gets, I mean, it depends on the classification. it depends on the classification of that employee and the line item that we, the amount that we put on that line item.
No, I agree with you, Marvin, I'm, but that's what I'm, thank you.
Right, right.
But, I mean, I, in a way, was trying to say that same thing, it's, it's the department, you, you come to us with your budget, you, you can so we don't determine that every department has to pay a particular amount. It's like Marvin said, you come to us with your budget, we okay that budget item and that's what gets paid.
We approve.
But you determine that, okay?
But see, I didn't determine.
No, no, I mean, the, that, that department head determines that and brings it to us in the budget, that's so if I just said they come to us with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, they wanna pay someone a hundred and forty thousand, no. But they come to us and they, they determine what they wanna, what they wanna pay and they present that to the, to us and then we okay it or not okay it.
But, okay, so, okay, what I'm saying is, is there is a wage study and maybe it has been followed or maybe it hasn't been followed, but there is no way and I'm not begrudging Michelle her wage or Dawn her wage, but there is no way that Michelle should be making a dollar thirty-two less than Sandy, who has been here forty years. Sandy must've been on the wage scale a level whatever, so what, what, what's, what level must Michelle be starting out as on day one at her thing? Then why am I not making what Gary would be making? That's what I'm asking for.
Okay, we underst, I understand what you're asking for, but let me tell you, let me see if I can explain what's going on with Michelle. We, the budget that was in that department for twenty twenty-two, that line item was already set for salary. We did not, so when the, he moved his employees, he could move that because the former employee had been there a lot, that long, the new employee could actually assume that same value. Am I saying that wrong?
I know what you mean, but, so we're, we just, that, that wage study is gone and I'm just screwed?
Well, we, the only way that we could control what goes on in that department is if we were to change that line item for a twenty twenty-three budget.
I'm just saying you could, you can change my budget, you found, you found money in the budget this year for a sheriff's thing that wasn't budgeted, you added a new position. I'm saying you can change my budget, that's what I'm asking you to do.
That's what you're asking and the, the answer is absolutely, we have that authority to do that. I'm not disagreeing with you one bit.
Right, and just because it was in that budget doesn't mean she, that they, they, that's why that should go through HR, it shouldn't be up to him whether he's an elected official or not.
If we have it on his line item, as a commissioner, we set the salaries, not the auditor. We do that in our budget process, so he had, if it was on his line item, as long as he did not exceed that line item.
But isn't that why we did the wage study?
I'm just telling you, what, on his budget, on his line item for salary, as long as he didn't exceed that, he has that latitude.
Any, anyhow
That department head.
Anyhow, Mr. Chairman and
Yes.
fellow commissioners, uh, I think we need definitely to look at uh, uh Cindy's particular wage here. Because as she said, uh, kinda from day one, it hasn't probably been right. And when you know what she's doing and uh, and as far as the public and that type of thing, I've had no, really very little complaints of any. So she has to be doing a wonderful job over there and it's not a very nice job, I wouldn't wanna sit in her, her chair. And, and, and what she does in planning and zoning is commendable. Uh, we've, I've been in planning and zoning in previous years, sometimes that didn't go so good, but since Cindy's been operating that and, and heading that, these people have the information that they need. When they come to that board, they, they got the permits that they need, they're not dumbfounded like, oh, I didn't know this, well, she provided that information. So she has, I'll give a little boost for her, she's done a wonderful job, I think, for Mercer County and I believe that we need to reevaluate her wages that she, she's talking about, that's all my, my side.
Well, and I think we, we accept what she's got in here and I think we try to correct the issue and I mean, I think we need to talk to Todd, um, we, we need to make it right.
There's also gonna need to be some discussion on maybe combining her titles into one position.
Correct. That's correct.
Cause there's a problem with purrs.
Right.
Dawn and I are still, yeah, working together with Cindy to um I guess, see where, what we need to do and how we need to correct it. So that's gonna be something that you guys will probably have to approve also.
Okay. Cindy, to help me keep track of all the areas that you discussed that are of concern, I would like to have a copy of what you were reading off of, please.
Okay.
And I appreciate you having the courage to bring it to us and reading it.
I don't think I read it all. Sorry, I'm a little emotional.
Yeah, no, I'm, I mean, perfectly understandable.
Right, rightfully just.
Rightfully just. Okay.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Well, I think we've covered everything on the agenda. Unless I'm missing anything.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Okay.
Please, everybody, I think you received this, read through it, it has very good information. It came from the Daco, it should've been in your email. I believe everybody has a copy of it.
Yeah.
It's a really worthwhile read, and if you're like me, I have to read it again.
Okay, with that, uh, this meeting stands adjourned.
So we're on the same page as part of that salary stuff, right?
Yes, yes, I, I think, Liza and I think Marvin.